It being seven o'clock, let's call to order. Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marian, do the call, or the roll call?
Here.
Yes.
Here.
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 Here. Before we proceed further, if anyone has a cellphone, could they silence it or turn it off so you don't get interrupted in the meeting? Thank you. I'm going to read out. Corn being present, the first order of business to hold a public hearing on the budget prepared in tentative form as set forth in the minutes of the meeting of the Board of Education held on July 11, 2017. The Secretary of the Board of Education has admitted affidavits and certificates of publication from the Landmark and the Riverside Brookfield Suburban Life stating that a tentative budget for District 208 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018 was placed, unfiled, and was conveniently available at the district's administrative offices. Notice was given that a public hearing on said tentative budget will be held at 7:00 PM on September 12, 2017. Due notice has been given of the public hearing on the budget and all other statutory requirements preliminary to the holding of such public hearing have been compiled with. Dr. Stinkus and Mr. Branick will present and explain 2017 and 2018 budget and answer any questions from the board. Dr. Stinkus?
The Board of Education, we went through a, we went through our changes rather thoroughly in August. Budget's been adjusted. Scott made a few more adjustments to the assumptions to make sure that they were transparent and that they were being based off of the numbers and the actuals, not the previous fiscal year budget. So I'll let Scott address some of those. We updated, a key one that we talked about briefly is we did get a minimum update from this, got an update from the State Board of Education and it will take a few months for them to figure out, under the new funding law and all the parameters, what each school's funding will be. So we don't have a final number on that, but we received what they called a fiscal year minimum. And so that was up by 52,000 from what we were originally projected to budget, which was 1.3. So that's been updated to 1.352. The deficit did not go down by 52,000 because there was a small calculation error with tabulating all the cells in the Excel document. So Mr. Branick identified roughly 34-
34,000.
The number was there since July, but it wasn't being tallied up correctly. So the deficit decreased another additional $18,000 from what we presented in August for the, from, to the Board of Education. Scott, do you want to go through the changes you made on the assumptions that highlight the keys to the budget?
Sure. Okay, if you notice on the assumptions page, I adjusted the FY '18 budget versus actual. That was actually FY '18 budget versus FY '17 budget, so that reflects changes in that. And then I also added the column next to it, which shows percent change on the items. Most of the items have been adjusted, or all the items that were adjusted were based off of the assumptions that you received at the last board meeting to adjust for the budget, either increases or decreases, and that's reflected within these assumptions. The assumptions have been also updated to reflect if it was an increase or a decrease based off of the actual and what is budgeted in the FY '18 budget. So that would be slightly different with the terminology that's out there that has been adjusted. Big ones, like I said, it shows a general state aid change reflecting that base minimal, and then went through all individual items that would be adjusted, either increase or decrease. I won't read through them for everybody, but they have been adjusted. I also adjusted in the tentative, or in the final budget here, the tax collection. I've got the figures from the auditor for our 2015 final collection, and that was at 99.5. So then I averaged out the last eight years just to see what our tax collection would be in order to come up with our final budget on it, just to make sure that budgeting 98.5% is a conservative, but yet a good guess for our revenue for local tax collection.
What was it last year?
2015 came in at 99.5.
Are we talking about tax year 2015 or school budget year?
Yes. Tax year 15. So I didn't have the second portion of the collection from our auditor. So I received that number from our auditor this week and plugged it in to the tax collection year.
Okay, so what's the 2015, the two assessments, what, when did we collect?
That would have been the second portion, the second half of it in our last fiscal year budget.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So I had the first half of it, which was roughly 53%, and then you add the second half collection, it came out to be 99.5.
So-
We're at 99.5 in 15, 99.1 in 14, 98.6 in 13. Our five-year average is right around 98.6. We're budgeting this year at 98.
98.5.
Yeah, but the last three years were the highest three years of collection on the whole period, weren't they?
Last three years were 99%.
Mm-hmm.
So, again, why are we, if we're collecting, we're finding our collections are higher more recently, why are we using a longer average, which in essence, we keep budgeting 98.5, and like last year we came in 99.5? And a percent, what's the difference? A percent is $200,000, right?
Yes.
So, I still ask the same question I've been asking all along. It seems like we're underestimating our tax collections, which is overestimating our deficit.
I mean, it is a conservative approach, and what we have to factor into is when Cook County releases the funds, to see if it's going to hit in this current fiscal year. In FY '17, we did have some taxes that came in after June 30. So if you looked back at what the actuals were, that percentage for 2016, current year ones, was actually 93%.
The last installments were received after-
The last installments were received after. So I'm not 100% sure when the county is going to release these funds. It may hit in this FY '18, or it may hit in FY '19.
Clarify one other thing, then. We're going to get a notary report pretty soon that says we do our books on a accrual basis. Are we doing our budget on a cash basis or accrual basis?
It's on a cash basis. And adjusted as much as I could with the inquiries that I received with the questions, formatting-wise, just so it would look more appealing to the public.
There were, were there any significant changes based on the questions we received?
Mostly formatting was the big piece. I could go into great detail if you'd like me to on-
Well, just, I don't have my computer, so I can't remember all the comments, but if I look at the certified staffing increase, it's almost 5%.
Okay.
Why? That's not what's in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, in that, in that certified staff account there, that is every single department with the descriptor as certified salary-
Right.
-within the budget.
Right.
So that takes into effect additional staff is all part of that, plus their increases in their-
I thought the additional staff was the separate line, that certified staff, three FTE.
Yeah, that's a, that's one below, right?
It's a separate line, right?
That is, just to give an estimate to the board as to what three FTE would cost.
Right.
That's all factored in.
So that is to make sure we're not counting it twice.
No, it is not counted twice.
Well, then answer, what was the percentage increase in the collective bargaining agreement for 2017, 18?
It depends on exactly what year they had. It was 3,800 for years 1 through 30, and then anybody with 30-plus with a salary number is 2,100. So depending on where they fell on the salary-
But it was-
-schedule.
Okay, so it was, let's, if it's 38 or 21, right?
Yes.
So anybody who made up, just, I don't know what the average salary is, but it's less than, say it's around 100,000, just for the sake of the math.
Mm-hmm.
They're getting either 3,800, which is a 3.8% increase, right?
Yep.
Or 2,100, which is a 2.1% increase, right?
Yes.
But $470,000 is almost 5% of what the actual salary was for last year.
And build into there is the new FTEs, which would-
The new FTEs-
They're, they're in there. They're not counted twice, they're in, based on position control in each department, all matched-
Because it's confusing here, because he's listing it, you know, at the 468 plus the 210, but the 210 doesn't-
The 210 is, I just wanted to give the board an idea of what new staff members cost.
So the 210 is in the 468?
It is in there.
Okay.
Yes, that's why we were asking, making sure it wasn't counted twice.
It is, it's not counted twice in that-
You just broke it out in the assumptions to show that the three, three new teachers counted roughly 210.
Okay. Well, let me ask then the same thing on medical. It says it's a 5% increase.
Yes, our overall premium was a 5% increase, and based off of the information that I had with staff members that put in their insurance requests, that was the best guesstimate that I had with our insurance costs. If they took family, single, based off of the entire document and what I received with paperwork, it came out to that.
So Scott, in addition to that, you have three additional FTEs. Did you budget health insurance for those FTEs, those additional FTEs in there?
Yes.
So not only do you have the premium increase, you also have the additional staff insurance cost in there?
Insurance. Yes.
Plus any differential between somebody going from an HMO to a PPO or returning you to a family, yes, all right.
Yep.
All right, let me just ask one more that I can remember. The stipends, say it's 1% increase, which I think probably matches the CBA, right?
Yes.
1% of $1,041,000 is $10,410, but we're showing an increase of $97,000. It's almost nine times 1%, it's almost a 10% increase. Why is that?
There were positions that weren't accounted for from the FY '17 budget that have been added to the FY '18 budget, and then this also takes into account, I took the entire spreadsheet and used a descriptor of stipend, and it took the entire pool within this budget for stipend. So anybody that wasn't accounted for has been added, and then there's also new positions that were added per the collective bargaining that have been added. So that portion there, give or take, each position potentially could be 7, 8,000, and there were at least four of them that weren't accounted for in '17, which would increase with the total.
So they weren't in the, because this is all actual, not budget, so they weren't in the actual, like we put them in the wrong place?
They, they weren't accounted for in the FY '17 budget, but in the actuals, they're in there. So under some of the stipends, you'll see that they're off by 6,000, 7,000. So the difference is now put back into the FY '18 to account for those positions.
But isn't this comparing actual budget? You said it's after actual, right?
Yes.
Off budget to actual, so it shouldn't-
It, it should be right on with every position that's out there that's stated in the collective bargaining and went through.
Scott, stop for a second. Wes asked if they were not put in the actuals properly, and you said they were.
They were in the actuals correctly.
So if they're in the actuals correctly, they're not affecting, if you're comparing on the last column, the '18 budget to the '17 actual, that shouldn't have a change, that shouldn't create a variance then?
There's some that were not added until this year, Scott.
Yeah.
We didn't settle the contract until last November. So some of the stipends, like boys soccer, girls water polo, adjusting people to step eight, those are not in last year's budget. They're first taking place in this year's budget, which could account for the additional increase.
But that answers, he's answering the same way as you were. Wes asked whether, so we, whether, whenever it was added, girls water polo is a spring sport. When we paid the stipend for girls water polo, did it hit the stipend correctly?
No, we added a second coach this year.
Yeah, it was added this year.
So this year would be an increase. We didn't have to say-
Oh, it's, so it's just news.
Right. So there's some new stipends that were added on?
There has been some new stipends and some new activities that hit for-
That were not added on the last-
For this particular year.
So the 1% increase plus the new-
Plus some new stipends.
Plus the new stipends.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, were there any other large questions, Scott?
I think the other most significant one I can remember is, how do we adjust, if we issue life safety bonds and we encourage, how do we adjust those numbers later on? Do we have to have another hearing to adjust the budget?
Yes, the budget would have to be amended.
Okay.
It would have to be on public display for 30 days.
Okay.
And we would have to go through the whole process again with, here's our final debt payment and how that would adjust our debt service accounts. I did also adjust the debt service accounts to match what our current debt payment would be, and then adjusted it for tax collection using the 5% error with the collection rate through the county. So that should equal what we're going to get for levy collection and debt service to match what our payment is for this current year. So that has been adjusted.
Okay.
I didn't have the correct payment and interest in the previous ones. I did get that for our debt payment and adjusted it.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that it? Anyone else on the board have any questions? Additional questions? Oh, all right. Let's open it up. Now, the meeting will now be open for public discussion, and all persons assigned to be heard will be heard at this time. Is there anyone out in the audience who would like to discuss the budget? Left side, right side? No? All right, seeing that there are no further comments from the public, no comments from the public, I now declare the public hearing and the budget completed, and the regular meeting will now proceed. All right, this is time that we have set aside for visitor statements related to any board issues. Anyone on the-
That was for the hearing.
Was that the hearing?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Okay, so we got discussion. What do we have on discussion?
Section five.
Discussion items, number five, discussion information items, I'm sorry. All right. FOIA request?
Yes, we had some FOIA requests. Let me pull that up, please. Three FOIA requests. Bob Skolnick requested copies of all legal bills paid from RBHS in regards to the lawsuit with the village of Brookfield. The response is attached. Ethan Mahalik provided email address of all the teachers. Response is attached. And Susan Rowe from Athletico was requesting the current contract for athletic training services. That's through our CBA, so that response is attached.
All right, let's go into District Goals Report, specifically graduation data.
Yeah, Beth, if you want to come forward.
Hi, good evening. Excuse my voice. So we will start with graduation rate, if everyone's good with that. So for the class of 2017, originally when I put the report together, we were at 93.1%. But then after some calculations with the state and finding a few more students that ended up at other high schools, our rate went up to 94.1%. So that's good news that it actually increased. Sometimes when students transfer out, it takes a while to find them in a system, in the system, so we'll take it. A few more students were found. So we are at 94% for the class of 2017, and our adjusted cohort for 2016 went up to 95% from the 93.9. And I'll get to that a little bit further in the report. When I projected what our 2017 graduation rate would be back in May of 2017, I projected 97.2. That number is off a little bit for the 90, for 4.1% because when I originally calculated this, I calculated off of 93.1, when it's really 94. So I was actually only off by 3.2%. And I will get to why I was off that, you know, 3.2%. So for the class of 2017, we had 11 students drop. Six of those students dropped during their senior year, and so that's certainly something that is a student services team and as a school-wide team, we need to look at. Of those five, of those 11, five of them were transfer students to RV, six of them were special education students, and five of those students went on to pursue GED. Unfortunately, when a student does pursue a GED, the state counts those students against us and considers them a drop. Over the last nine years, between eight and 13 students have dropped from their cohort. So obviously that's something that, you know, we want to continue to shrink those numbers and try to keep every single one of our students here and get them graduated with a high school diploma. We had nine students that did across the stage in May, but were able to finish in summer school through credit recovery, so that certainly helped our graduation rate to 94. I think that summer school program that we have for them is very robust, and we are really, take every initiative possible to get those students back in school right after graduation and encourage them to come back and get their diploma. We retained 18 students for the class of 2000, from, for the 17, 18 school year, and so I'll explain what that means. We have seven students that didn't graduate through credit recovery, meaning when we started school on August 15th, we considered them fifth-year seniors. Three of those fifth-year seniors were transfer students that, you know, as I was speaking about some of these students that didn't make it, three of those were transfer students. So again, that's really something that as a student services team, as a school-wide team, we really need to look at our, our transfer students.
Can you explain one thing again?
Sure.
I know you've done this before, Beth.
That's okay.
We have to track our students that start as freshmen even if they transfer out, right?
Correct.
To determine whether they graduate.
Yes.
Why are the seniors that transferred in, and the people that transferred in their senior year, why are they counted against us? I thought they had to be tracked by the schools they came from.
No, because once they leave a school through SIS and they are picked up from another school, then that school becomes responsible-
Okay.
-for their graduation.
So the kids that leave us, if they don't go to a school in Illinois, or they don't go to school, that's why they count against?
No, if they transfer to a school out of state, as long as there's a record that we can find where they landed, then that school is accountable for them. Where we take a hit is if a student decides to transfer out and they say they're going somewhere, say they are going to, you know, transfer to Morton, but yet they don't actually fulfill, they don't fill out paperwork through Morton and request records, and then there's no tracking them in SIS.
Okay.
So SIS is tracking every single student once they join a cohort. So when, you know, parents register their students as kindergarteners, that is their cohort, and they are tracked through the SIS system. And sometimes that means me making phone calls to find out where students have landed. And, you know, we started this practice a couple of years ago because it was like, we have so many students, where did they go? And we were able to track students down. So now that's really become our practice, is to find out where every student has landed. Unfortunately, sometimes they don't land anywhere, and that's why that drop counts against So of the seven students that were credit deficient, four of those seven were special education students, and six of those seven happily have returned to RV as fifth-year seniors and are participating in the APEX program. They are typically here five periods a day, and based on other years, if they come back, we time to get them graduated. So that's why that adjusted cohort rate tends to go up, because after five years, we can consider them graduates. So we work very hard to try and get them motivated to come in, do what they need to do, and get out as quickly as possible. 11 students, special education students, and this is another area that the state counts against us. I know I explain this every year, and it, it still doesn't make sense, but we had one student that received a certificate of attendance, and unfortunately, that counts against us. But we had seven, I'm sorry, 10 students that met their graduation requirement, meaning they earned their diploma. They were ready to accept their diploma, however, they decided to stay on for transition services. And as a special education student, that is their right. And unfortunately, the state, if they don't take their diploma and the student returns, they don't consider them graduates, and again, they count those students against our graduation rate. So for the 2017 cohort, the projected adjusted graduation rate, if we are able to keep those seniors that return and get them to graduate, and again, I had to redo the math based on the 94% graduation rate that was changed, I anticipate it will be 95.5 if we can get those additional students graduated over the next, you know, year, hopefully. But then when you look at what our graduation rate would be, if you exclude the special education students, students returning for transition services and the one with the COA, our graduation rate is at 95.5%, which I think is a testament to the really hard work that the teachers, deans, administrators, counselors do to achieve that 95.5.
It says 95.7, so is that?
I'm sorry, the 95.5, 5.7, yes.
Just wanted to make sure we're looking at the same spot.
Yeah, I'm looking at the 95.5 that I'm thinking about for the adjusted, the real one, but the 95.7 is the one when you take out the special education students for transition and the COA.
Beth, I have a question.
Yes?
So those special education students, since their cohort is gone and never coming back, they'll never count, and when they age out, they don't get to count towards-
They do.
Oh, they do?
They do. When they take their diploma, they will count.
Oh, okay.
So that's why sometimes our cohort will go up. But they are able to stay until the day before their 22nd birthday. So we don't necessarily see those changes, you know, for somebody who graduated from the class of 2014. We typically just go back and adjust the previous year, but they do, it does in the long run add to our over percentage.
So Beth, I have a question. It's 11 special ed, how many special ed kids were in the senior year, or in the senior year?
Class of 17.
I would totally be guessing if I asked that. I mean, we have probably 200-plus special education students in our building, so-
That's a pretty small percentage.
Well, over 10%.
Yeah.
And we have, just so the board's clear, that we have special education students that receive some assistance throughout the school year and graduate and go on, receiving the diploma.
Oh, sure.
These are students that have some significant disabilities, you know, that need transition services till their 21st birthday.
Right. And so they're learning job training, they're working with our-
Life skills.
-transition team, life skills students.
Right.
So those, you know, those 11, again, were eligible for a diploma, but just chose to stay on to receive those additional services.
Could you clarify one thing I didn't understand?
Yes.
Under the bullet that says, move up a little, Marian, would you, please?
Marian, move up a little bit.
With the one that says 18 students, it says seven students, credit deficiency, four of seven are special ed, then the next bullet says 11 students are special ed. What's confused me.
Okay, yeah, so the 11 and the seven are equalling the 18, and the seven were the students that were considered fifth-year seniors, meaning they did not earn the-
What, out of the 18, were 15 of them special ed students?
Of the, yes.
That's, well, is it confusing?
Okay, yes. But I was grouping them, and the students that did, were not eligible for diploma in that first section of seven, and the 11 that were eligible were the one with the COA, and then the other 10 were eligible to earn a diploma. So I think that speaks to our, you know, our students are earning their credits, but they're just staying on for services here at RV. And then, again, back to the class of 2016, again, these are students, when we recalculate our graduation rate, students that came back last year, worked through the credit recovery, were able to earn their diploma, and we were able to adjust our 2016 cohort to 95%. Questions on that? So I- So I start tracking this pretty early on, actually starting at end of sophomore year, but giving you a projection for the class of 2018, looking at students who have already left to pursue their GED. We've had one student drop. Looking at students that potentially will come back in the fall of 2018 due to credit deficiencies, credit deficiency, we have one student with possible certificate of attendance, and we're looking at nine students that are possibly coming back for transition services. And I think my projection for the class of 2017 was off because of those 10 students that were coming back for transition, didn't anticipate such a high number, and now looking at possibly nine coming back from the class of 2018 is something to look at, you know, is this a trend where we're going to have more and more students needing and coming back for transition? And then, no students expelled, so that's good news. So right now, the projection for our graduation class for 2018 is looking at a 95.8 percent. So it's just the importance of keeping every student here and any student that's looking to drop, looking to pursue a GED, trying to counsel them and to stay and keep them here. So I've just listed some of our continued supports that we give our students to help maintain our graduation rate. We are diligent in creating a watch list for these students that are at risk of not graduating. We're monitoring that through our small team meetings that consists of me, the deans, social workers, our behavior interventionist counselors, and really looking at students in the class of 2018 that are credit deficient. So currently, any student that is behind in credits, we have them enrolled in APEx at some level to try and get them caught up so that they don't feel defeated and frustrated and feeling like graduation is not within their reach, having regular meetings. We also stay in touch with the credit recovery teacher, are working with her so that we know what attendance is looking like, if there's any behavior concerns, we get the deans involved. The counseling interns that we have have been facilitating some groups with our transfer students. They did that last year, we're going to continue to do that because that clearly seems to be an at-risk group, especially if they're transferring into RB late, oftentimes come in credit deficient. So it's trying to come up with a plan that they feel that they can be successful here and give them some courage and hope that they can walk out with a diploma on time, hopefully. Continue to have conversations with parents so that they're really aware of what's going on, so that there's no surprises. We send credit checks to our seniors right at the beginning of the year so that they know where their students stand, they know what needs to get done, and we have senior contracts that are sent out at the end of the first grading period, so hopefully that there are no surprises. But I think for some of these students that are at risk, you can't communicate too much. We just really need to make sure parents are on board, and we're working as a team to get their students through and graduated on time. For students that are credit deficient for the class of 2019, so our current juniors, we typically give them access to credit recovery second semester, because the first semester, we're really focusing on those fifth-year seniors, we're focusing on our seniors that are in danger of not graduating, so to, you know, not really pull all of our resources, you know, I don't know, keeping our, keeping our resources focused on our, like I said, our current seniors and our fifth-year seniors. And then we will offer credit recovery for our rising seniors. Again, I've already spoke to that during summer school, it's been very successful, and we'll continue to do that. And we offered math and science and English courses over summer school for our first session, and I think that they were really well-attended this year, considering the history, for whatever reason, RB just does not have a history of summer school, so that is something that myself and Dave Mannan and Kylie Gregor and Kristen are all working for, really try to get that out there and getting students to attend summer school so that they don't get so far behind and don't have to scramble senior year to get caught up.
And you mentioned, touch on real quick, I thought I saw one question about APEx, just how we use that.
Did I answer?
She answered it, had a time. She explained why they wait to the second semester for the current juniors, because they're so busy.
But just maybe summarize what APEx is for the rest of the board. It's an online?
Yeah, it's an online program. It's accredited, and it covers any, all of our subject matter here, and there are modules that students can pass out of. It really becomes a mastery of learning as opposed to just having them, you know, sit through a class that they've already sat through. If they're able to master those skills, then they move on to the next. We have a full-time person working with them in this program, and we really are having some success over the last several years. I think it's made a big difference in just students feeling hopeful that they're not so far behind, that they're not going to make it. Any questions on graduation? Okay, so moving on to matriculation, we, how I figure matriculation is through data from NAVIANS. So the students take a senior survey to indicate what their four-year plans are, and then we also base it on where students are requesting their final transcripts to be sent. Now, again, this is where students are self-reporting, and we're basing it only on the students that are graduating too, so I'm not taking into account the students that didn't graduate or the students that are here for transition. When you, so our, our matriculation rate for the class of 2017 was 97.5. It was a larger class from 2016 to 2017, 15 more students. I think that the percentages are pretty similar from the class of 2016, but I really did notice an increase of students attending a two-year college from a four-year college. So I, you know, did sort of an informal poll with the counselors, just, you know, what are they hearing from students? Why is this? And it really is a financial decision. It, it's so much more cost-effective to start out in a two-year school, especially if they're not completely sure what they want to do, they're not completely sure they want to leave the area. So that really seems to be the driving force why our students are going to try their hand at a two-year college first before going on to a four-year school. We'll continue to do all the things that we're doing in student services to keep matriculation up, continuing to hold our parent evenings. We're starting a career committee. Kylie Gregor has started that last year, and I am going to partner with her on that this year so we can really start talking careers with students. Not exactly sure what it's going to look like, but, you know, we're going to have a plan, because there's, you know, there's college and then there's a career, and how to manage, marry those two together. Continue to hold our, like I said, our parent nights. This has been just such an asset over the last couple of years. Triton College sends one of their reps to us twice a month, and any student that does not have a plan or does not have sort of a goal after high school, we kind of sign that student up to meet with the college rep from Triton and, you know, make that introduction to just start a conversation, you know, would you consider Triton? What are you interested in? And it's been, I think, just beneficial for RB, for Triton, for the students, really see a difference, and the students seem to like that we're taking the initiative to hook them up with somebody when they might be a little hesitant to make the introduction themselves. Trying to over-communicate information to parents when we are holding evening events for college. I'm going to try something new and add some things to the newsletters, maybe do some links, things related to financial aid, things related to taking campus tours online, just maybe some things that parents aren't aware of, and sometimes students don't, students don't always share that. Now that students, three grade levels are using Chromebooks and are one-to-one, I feel like we can push more things out through technology so students are aware, so it's not just going to parents. We've been holding a first-generation college group for juniors probably for the last 10 years, and with our increase in minority students, I think that's becoming more and more important to ensure that students are, have as much information as possible about how to start that college planning process. Again, financial aid, we continue to have people available for parents to assist them with filling out the FASA, and we have a speaker, Frank Palasami, he's been coming here for, gosh, since I've been at RB, and every year he comes, I feel like he gives parents really great advice on how to plan for college. And we used to only offer it, or we would advertise it only for our junior and senior parents, and now we want to advertise it for freshman parents so that they are mindful in how they can prepare for their college, for their students' college. Continue to have camp college, we have ASVAB testing still, and then we have a trip for our at-risk seniors that are really sort of not wanting to go to college, bringing them to Triton and letting them see what it's like to be on a college campus, if there's no one in your home that might do that for them. And then I started this last year, just some sort of fun facts, interesting to see how many transcripts we send. Over 1,800 transcripts were sent from the class of 2017, ranging from 1 to 20. The average number was five, and College Board recommends between five and eight applications, so I like that we're sitting right where that recommendation is at. We had over 90 college admissions reps here, and we do a survey at the end of the year with our seniors, just getting information, just how their experience was, and really hitting some questions related to student services. And it was interesting that, I was surprised, that we only had about 50-some percent of our students taking advantage of those rep visits. So that's one of my personal goals, is to make sure that we're really getting that information out to students. I know some of them don't want to miss class, so I appreciate that, but making sure that they are really exposing themselves to the reps that are here, because RB has really become that place where reps want to come and meet with students. I think when I first started, I would, said we maybe had 40 to 50 reps here, and now that we're getting close to 100, it really says that they want to recruit RB students. 363 different colleges across the country were applied to, and then I listed the top four schools where our students applied for the class of 2017.
Is it, are the less kids applying to go into the military, or is it just harder to get in now?
There, there's, there are less kids. I see that in the number of students that take the ASVAB test.
Okay.
Every year, it seems to be less and less that they take the test. So that's why I assume that there's less and less interest.
Any questions for Beth?
Yeah, these after-grad kids, we take to Triton, and we, and we do all the stuff.
Yeah.
Do we ever follow up, see if they finish?
If they actually follow through with Triton.
Right, or if they follow up, and if they go one year, they actually go two years, and then if that-
Yeah, there is a student, there is a student tracker that we can see that, you know, sometimes they need to work first. It's, it's hard to kind of, I mean, I feel like when I was in college, it was like you started college and got out in four years, and now there's so many other factors. But yes, I can definitely look into getting some information on, you know, once they leave, how long is it taking? Are they actually following through with that plan? Sometimes they have really good, you know, intentions, and then there's all these other factors that come into play.
Well, back to the financial, right?
Yes, that's a big piece. That's definitely a big piece.
I don't want to, they don't want to take kids and burden them, say, well, go, 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 and then they're like, I don't have the money.
Yeah, I mean, and that's why I think a community college is a really good option, you know, Triton is very affordable, and if they're willing to take out some loans, but then that really scares parents, like, especially if they have parents who have cosign on those loans, so.
Certainly a lot of press about it, right?
We do have more and more of our students interested in COD as well. That was another sort of suggestion in the senior survey, was that they wanted us to provide more information on COD, even though it's not our community college, they offer some programs that Triton does not. So that was another thing that we were going to work on and try and have a COD rep here a couple of times a month for those students.
A student attends COD that's not in their district, is it, like paying out-of-district tuition?
Yeah, they do pay an out-of-district tuition, unless it's a program-
It's a program that they have.
...that Triton doesn't offer, like a television. I think that's one that they don't offer at Triton, so they could pay in district tuition if the program is not offered at Triton.
But they have some really interesting programs. They have like the two-and-two and the three-and-one, right, which they help the kids, the two-and-two is you go to COD for two, and then you go to the four-year for two, but they, everything's all planned out for you, and then same thing, three-and-one.
Yes.
So it doesn't matter where you start, right?
Right.
It's only on your diplomas where you finish.
It's where you end up.
Right.
Yeah.
So those are cool programs. It's definitely worth offering.
They do that Triton, too.
They do. I think it just depends, I think Triton may have, COD may have some additional partnerships that Triton does not. So, you know, those are good conversations for counselors to have with students individually, but I do think having someone from COD come and share some of that information, or even, you know, share it with the counselors so that we can push it out to students and families.
But you, it sounds like you are trying to educate the kids, it's whether they're taking, the families, if they're taking advantage of it.
Yeah, we are, and again, I, I think just increasing more communication, what's available, putting it in the newsletter, e-blast, putting it on our website, so parents have sort of one-stop shopping where they know to go to get information.
Because besides not, besides having your diploma from where you graduate, you also start your grade point average over again when you transfer from a junior college, right?
Mm-hmm.
So for most kids, that's where they struggle the first year or two, right?
Is there any more question? Amen?
I'll just, a quick comment, your dual credit for your AP Statistics class is a great program. I hope we can see some more of those. It's a fantastic idea. So if a student doesn't, for just our families who are watching, if your student does well in class all year, but they just didn't test well, they'll still get a college transcript with their college credits. And AP Stats is coming from Laola, I believe, right?
Yeah, this year we have, this year we have four opportunities. Last year, we had two.
Okay.
So we were able to expand that to AP Computer Science A, AP Computer Science Principles, AP Chemistry, and AP Statistics.
That's a great program.
So if the students complete those courses and pass those courses, they get dual credit from a credited university?
There's a small fee that they have to pay, and parents, if they attended open house, should have been provided that information and can follow up with their teachers.
Sure, it's cheaper than credit hours at camps.
Yes, it's much cheaper. And so the counselors have pre-registration meetings with students prior to selecting their classes. We're going to be sure to include that dual credit information on the PowerPoint that we present to the students, and then the PowerPoints are always available to parents on our website, so we'll try to push that information out more so parents are aware.
Well, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
So the only goal reports that are remaining will be the SAT, or the ACT/SAT goal reports and the AP information, and that will come at the last meeting in September, and that will be all the district goal reports that the board receives on an annual basis.
All right, next item is police department radio equipment, any updates?
No update yet on the grant and the, no update on the communications center yet.
All right. And now it's time for visitor statements. Does anyone in the audience want to make any visitor's comments? Not seeing any, we will move on to additional discussion items. At this point, does any board education member have any additional items they want to discuss?
I want to put one small comment regarding our new track. I just want to make a reminder to our community.
Okay, so we'll put that down.
At the end.
At the end.
Before we go in.
All right.
Two minutes, that's all I need.
Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Actually, I have the approval of the minutes. We get a motion, and then we can discuss resolution. Up there, and if anyone wants to read it.
Ms. Shaw, the Board of Education, Talonship High School, District 28, Cook County, Illinois, hereby takes the file in action on the list of consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on August 8th, 2017, open and close, as presented and amended in the September 12th, 2017 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Now, let's have, open for discussion. Is there any items on the minutes people want to talk about? Not here, no comments? Okay, Mary Ann, take the vote.
Ms. Tresko?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Smithin?
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. This whole business, action items, life safety items, capital improvements.
So there are no, I have adopted budgets, so the, the life safety capital improvements, no updates. See, the, we're just doing punch list items. The tennis courts were painted on Saturday afternoon. The three spots that had to pass the flood test, so they were flooded on Friday afternoon. They passed the flood test. They were painted on Saturday afternoon. They were re-flooded now with the paint on them, and I believe out of the three, one still has to be addressed. It didn't drain within the hour, according to the tolerance. The tolerance, so they'll add some additional patch and additional slope. And then they'll flood it, paint it, flood it. So we're still going through the punch list process on that. The additional windscreen, that's for that one section on Hollywood Avenue, that's missing. At the construction meeting today, it arrived again. This time it was not the right length. It was seven and a half feet to nine feet. So we were told that an emergency, it will be shipped out, and we should have it by early next week, and it should be installed. It takes less than an hour to two hours to install it, and then that will complete all the windscreens around the perimeter of the courts where appropriate. The roof is complete as far as coating is concerned. We're just working on roof ladders and some final tin work. And so that punch list item will be scheduled, that punch list walkthrough will be scheduled within the next week or two. So in regards to the twenty-seventh, summer of 2017 projects, we are wrapping up. The only other outstanding issue from the tennis court parking lot project is the bioswale. The bioswale is the, the wetland, or wetland-looking-like area between the tennis courts and the parking lot. And we need to work on the depth of that wetland, and they're working on that with the subcontractors and whether...
Between the parking lot and the footballs?
No, between the parking lot and the tennis courts. There's an area that's trenched, and it looks like there's dandelions grown in, there's yellow flowers.
It's a natural flood plain.
That's eventually going to become a rain garden. That was one of the requirements we put in with the village. So all the water from the parking lot flows into the bioswale first. It gets held there, it gets cleaned there, and then it flows into the vault. And that's how it moves out through the vault. But we have the cubic feet in regards to where the structures are in the center of the two bioswales are on the punch list, and the contractor and the engineer are working through that. Once that is completed, we'll then replant and put the mulch in the bioswale. But that's the only punch list item, I'm assuming will take longer than a few days to address. And so that should be completed here in the next two weeks or so. There is one parking space in the parking lot that, you know, if you notice, there's some curb cuts so that the water can get through and drain into the bioswale. And when the, we're laying this out and it was striped, there's one curb cut which exactly lines up in the middle of a parking spot. And so a small car could possibly back into the bioswale. So to prevent that, we will be putting in a ballard with the bios, one of our bioswale signs. It explodes what a bioswale is. We have some signs made already. So that will be put in there so that a car can't back into the bioswale.
Why did they miss the pitch on the tennis court the first time?
It's not that they missed the pitch, it's just how fast it drains. So the tolerance that's the spec, that was spec, is that after a rain event, it has, anytime that's over seventy degrees, it has one hour for any puddle to be less than the depth of a nickel. And so, I mean, you're talking, I mean, to the human eye, we wouldn't know, but I mean, if there's a low spot in the asphalt or not a strong enough pitch at the end. Because the tennis courts, the four tennis courts, all drain into the bioswale as well. Only the one tennis court flows into a trench drain, and that actually looks like a sewer. So, so after they patched it and flooded it again, two of them drained fine. There's one that still had a puddle that was slightly larger than the depth of a nickel. So we have to add a little patch to that, pitch it a little more, so that it rounds out.
Do we expect the patch to wear as well as the rest of the tennis court?
Yes, I mean, this is common practice. Whenever they install this, this happens for the first few times until everything passes the flood test.
Okay.
And if you went out there after Saturday's painting, I don't even know if you would recognize, you know, where the patches were laid. If you were here Friday night for the football game, you could see where the patches were. There were large gray patches. Once that was dried and passed the flood test, then they painted, and they sand it and blended it, and you would never know. Scott, did I cover, is that everything?
Mm-hmm.
Facility for the life safety projects in the summer.
Yeah, and you touched on the roof ladders and the stairs.
That's all that's outstanding. Punch list, the roof's here in the next month, so that's it.
All right. Move on to the second item of old business, which is to adopt the fiscal 2018 budget.
Let me read the resolution.
Sure. Where is the Board of Education of Talentiup High School, District 28, Number 28, Cook County, State of Illinois, caused to be prepared in tentative form? A budget and the Secretary of this Board has made the same conveniently available to the public for inspection for at least thirty days prior to final action thereon. Whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget on the twelfth day of September 2017, notice of said hearing was given at least thirty days prior thereto as required by law, and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education, said district as follows. Section one, that the fiscal year of this school district be and same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July 1, 2017, and ending June 30, 2018. Section two, that the following budget contain an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and on end of expenditures from each be and the same as hereby adopted as the budget of this school district for said fiscal year.
Second.
All right, we have discussion. Anyone have comments? Discussion, look to my left.
I have some comments.
All right.
So I think the total number, the projected deficit, is it three-twenty-six or three-sixty?
Three-twenty-six.
Three-twenty-six. Three-twenty-six. As Dr. Skengas has talked about before, we've done a really good job of keeping our budget relatively balanced. And we've had some good luck, too, with the tax refunds. If you look at that budget summary we had before, just the increase in the teachers that are currently here, roughly $250,000, is the same as what we get in our increase in taxes every year. So that doesn't even cover new teachers or anything else we're going to do. So I'll vote yes for this, but I'd really like us to look maybe at the midterm about things we can do for next year, next year's budget, in terms of reducing maybe some of our course offerings, and start that discussion. Be it less classes for underclassmen or something to that effect, because I don't think it's appropriate that, you know, we continually run two, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar deficits.
Anyone else on my left?
I would say kind of adding to that is, if we were doing our accounting on accrual basis, which we tell people we do, but we don't really do for our budget, right? And with the new state funds, it's very likely we're not going to have a deficit at the end of the year, right?
If they make their payments on time, you know, and how this new funding formula comes into play.
But I still agree with John.
We could potentially be right there.
So that helps for this year.
Yes.
But that won't continue forever.
No.
And he, I agree with him. We have to stay within our budget, so we have to look at doing that. And one thing in particular, and I talked to Gary about this one time, is what we now need to do is see, is the extra money we're spending, because we're told they're going to help improve our results, and what we are monitoring as our goals, is it working? You know, are we, are we seeing, you know, more higher AP grades? Are we seeing better? We've got a good rapport, our graduation rate's doing well. But do we, you know, we need to see, well, we've been doing some of these things for two or three years now. Are we seeing improvements based on it versus, you know, just continue down a path, and are we getting in essence a bang for our taxpayers' bucks on it? So I think that's another thing that we should look at and think about when we're looking at what our goals are set at and what our results were from prior year. Does that make sense?
All right. Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I think, you know, I'm not very comfortable with deficit spending. I think I've talked to most everybody about that, I think, the last couple of meetings. Go back to the revenue projecting, I think last year we, I think we might have projected a deficit spending we came in like $300,000 over, so... Yeah, we had a budget, I think, break at zero. It was like minus $4,000 or something. Pretty much a break even. And then we came in at plus 300. So it goes back to the, why, why aren't we projecting the revenues to be where we think they're going to be and have it be a break even? Except we're doing this conservative, conservative, conservative. Well, you know, I think we need to write a budget to what it's, to push you a little bit, you know? And I don't say it's push you, you can't make revenue, but, you know, I think, I'm just not a big fan of the, of putting a $300,000 deficit on the table and thinking that's okay. And I think the projection is, I think you guys did a last November, you know, five, forecast five analytics, where we're just predicting negative, 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 that's eating into, back to Dr. King, we're going to have to look at how to change what we're doing, right? Go down the same path and expect a different result, it's not going to happen. You know, we need to, what are we going to do to make a non-deficit next year?
You realize those are very hard conversations to have because the question in the back of our mind should always be what's best for kids. And sometimes going over that, this is a good budget because right now, we're not that far off the mark. I don't feel like this is a lot off the mark, and we're doing what's best for kids. Getting rid of course offerings is not something that...
Well, I think that's, that's conversations we need to have, and we haven't had a, you know, we voted against a referendum seven, eight years ago, right? So we're pushing ten years plus without revenue increases, right? So maybe it's time we talk about revenue increases and why we're doing that. What is the cost of not doing that? But you can't just run a deficit. That's, that's not acceptable in my, in my thought pattern, and use up the, the pattern, and later, come back later today and ask us to borrow money to cover that deficit. That's not, I'm not comfortable with that either. So, you know, we'll get into the bait and switch later, but I'm not buying it.
If we, if we, you know, so the three-twenty-six, as I explained in August, realistically, if we put down, we took down to 100,000, 170,000 that we have in tax appeals, I mean, our deficit would be less than 100,000. So...
Realistically, then, let's put it realistically. Let's put it that way.
Here's, here's the thing.
It could go the other way next year.
Well, we, you know, seven years ago, when we came on board, we did a lot of things to bring the expenditures back down.
I know, I appreciate that.
And we've got, so now we're at this point now where we've listened to a plan of, you know, additional personnel and achieving certain goals. I think when we get to that time in this year, when we're, when the FTE presentation's put in front of us, that's when we'll have a chance to question things and see how those goals are coming to fruition. If there's additional time needed, if there's an alternative plan that we can do to get over the hump while, you know, because there are certain things dynamically that are going to be happening in the next four years from a personnel standpoint, as people retire, new people come on board, that would be a natural, you know, dollar change going on. But we also have to be realistic and see if that, that timetable keeps us, you know, so that we're not in a deficit position either. I agree with you, the budget deficit is not the best scenario.
And our bubble of students goes up about 2021, it's supposed to max out and then go back down, and that's where we're talking about some of it.
So I think, yes, we should have, you know, really good discussions in this upcoming year as we see request for dollars.
Well, I'm not saying we shouldn't have them. I'm just saying they're going to be tough. I think that this district is pretty lean. I mean, the administration, the cost, I mean, that's our biggest cost, right, is people. We need people to educate kids. And our biggest cost is, is the people. You said some people are going to be retiring, and administrative costs in this district are very low, very low. Our highest-paid person, I mean, everybody else, Scott, Kristen, Kylie, Beth, they're all pretty cheap.
The, I think the two...
I mean, they really are. When you look at other district salaries that are, that are similar to RB, we're in good shape that way.
Right. That's true.
That is true. And the board will have seen a study, and we can do another study on that. But I think there's a couple of things, and as I stated in the August meeting, Wes, your thing is, hey, we should lay it all out there in the budget, and then see how it comes in. The board, for the last six years, seven years that I have been the superintendent, has always, the majority of the board has preferred that I budget fiscally conservative on revenues and aggressive on expenditures, so that always show worst-case scenario. The benefit of doing that is today, approving a budget of a negative three-twenty-six, we should come in no lower than negative three-twenty-six, which is why one of my goals is that we have to meet exactly what we budget. If I put out there all the revenues and zero tax appeals, and put that out there and show you, hey, we only have a deficit of 50,000, or we're running a small surplus, and all these things don't come in, and all, and we're sitting here June 30th, and I have to pay, take out of working cash, three hundred and twenty-six, you know, that's, that's worse. I think I'd rather show you worst-case scenario and then overachieve than show you best-case scenario and not hit the market, and then all of a sudden every year, and once we get to that point, we're taking money out of our working cash.
Well, I think revenue is pretty explainable, right? Either the state did pay us or they didn't pay us.
Right. The problem is that they never paid us before June 30th.
Right, but, you know, here we are. The history is.
Or at the rate that they promised.
And the history is, and the reality is, and now, but it's pretty easily explainable. Say, well, here's your minus 300, Wes, because the state was supposed to pay us, and they didn't pass. We're going to get it next year. We don't do accruals, so next year you'll be 300 over.
Correct.
We got, right.
Right.
And I'll say, well, that's great, I'll remember that, I'll write that down.
It's six of one, it's exactly what you're saying.
Right.
Six of one, half a dozen of the other, because we could be $300,000 richer in a month from now if we get that extra payment they didn't make before June 30th.
Yeah, like last year.
Right. Then it looks like this year...
Because we got a $200,000 windfall, right? And beat budget by 300 and some thousand dollars.
Correct. Well, we haven't, we've taken this approach of revenue tight and expenditures aggressive, and we haven't finished a year with a deficit yet, so I'd ask that, and we can forecast this, which we do in our financial...
The real problem is this arcane accounting system that we're forced to use with the treasurer, that's in some language that nobody even knows how to write anymore, it's thirty years old. It does not easily allow us to do a very good accrual basis of accounting. If you could do that, you could probably slice the dice a little closer than what you have, but, you know, we just, it's, we'd have to develop our own program to do it, and it wouldn't probably be worth the money to, you know, we're forced to do it on a cash basis because of that, using this, you know, kind of outdated information as we're doing the budget. That, to me, that's as big of issue of anything, of how close you want to get to it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm very comfortable with the conservative approach, Kevin. I just am. Wes, I hear your point, but to think that you're going to be able to budget and get it to zero where it's even, that's just ignoring the realities of a budget in a school district, and the uncertainties that are just inherent in a school district. It just is. It's just how it is. I would rather you be conservative and then be able to come out looking a little bit better than have to come back and... than have to come back and say, oh, well, that didn't come through and now, you know, we're sitting in a worse off spot than we thought. That's just the reality of budgeting in education in Illinois and with the system that we have to. It just is. I know it's hard to swallow and I'm sure people, it is hard to swallow, it is.
They are.
It is, if you're not in the world, right? Like if you're not in the world of education, if you want, you want it all to add up every time and you want everything to be, you know, set in stone, that's just not how it is.
Yeah. I probably wouldn't get nervous till a million. Till 300,000 is like.
Well, and I know it's.
I might get nervous before that, but. No, I think, I think that's my number.
Yeah.
Just, that's me.
I think the other thing too is the new state funding bill was passed and if I understand the layout correctly, we should be receiving an increase in funding. Our, where our adequacy number is and my understanding from preliminary meetings and webinars is that we should see an increase in our state funding. So, like I said, the state superintendent said we should see that within a month or two of what our projection would be. And there's no reason to think that that would go down every year. So until we see those numbers, we should be able to, after January 1, being halfway through our fiscal year and seeing our general state aid and stuff, we should be able to have some serious discussions if we need to look at, if there needs to be some reductions or considerations or if we're okay operating, you know, as is. Based on our, I mean, we won't see enrollment projections for another month, month and a half, but we projected to have roughly 1.03, or 103.3 FTE and we didn't use it, I think, like a .3. So, I mean, we're, we're staffed at a point to where all of our core classes should be at 27.1 now. So we should be at a point to where we should have to increase FTE unless there is an initiative or a program or there is a windfall or an increase of student enrollment. We should be at a point to where we're okay with staffing, which is our largest expenditure. I wait, I would wait till we see that data in the next few months and then we can start having those tough conversations after January 1 if we need to look at restructure.
Because I think in the analytics, we're supposed to not run a deficit this year and then $600,000 deficit next year and then you're a million two the year after that. So you're pretty close to a million. We're only two years away unless we change our, our thought pattern.
One of the arguments, one of the arguments.
You've got to drive revenue or?
One of the arguments that, you know, Tim has made a lot is that we've used PMA for the entire time I've been here and every year they projected a deficit and we finish every year with a surplus. We control the variables that we put into PMA. And so we had talked this year, like, do we have PMA come out? Or if we do, you know, do we give, so, you know, you're putting in CPI for increase, you're putting in 10% on insurance even though it might only be 5%. I mean, there's some variables there that you put in, again, ultra conservative. So it paints this picture and then it's not.
Or PMA just as a boilerplate, they don't even look at the separate variables.
So I think let's get some, gather some data over the next few months and I think we'll be able to have a good discussion after first of the year.
Yeah, I'm just going to, because you're new, but there are four of us that have been here for eight years. And when we came eight years, we were about 2 million in the red. And we cut 17 teachers the first year, 17 the next year, cut programs, all after school, clubs, everything. Nobody was happy with that and that didn't make an excellent school. And little by little, each year we had to put, we were able to put back and put back and put back. And we are in a fantastic place right now. And so we can't be rash and just run in to say, oh, you know, I'm afraid that we're going to be a little bit in deficit without getting to the end of the year. We have to look at what has been developed in just eight years and all the things that are offered for these, for our students. It's a tremendous place.
I agree with you.
So.
That is great. And I agree with you, you did a great job in the last eight years.
And to your point, I think it's always good to tire us and to look under the hood sometimes to see if there's, you know, over time.
And if we're projecting a double and a double, well, you know, we're right back where we started. We don't want to be where we started. So after Dr. Keen's point, let's rethink this in what we're talking about.
With the school budget, right? You, you, you bring your, you bring your personnel in at one time of the year. You don't even know what your revenues are going to be another time of the year and you budget already how many months into the, already the year, right?
So I wasn't even involved in half of this.
Right, so when we get to.
Seventy-eight percent of the budget.
For January and February, that time, we really question programs and, and look at things and, and classes and all that kind of stuff. All right.
Good questions.
Are we ready? Is anyone else have comments or ready for a vote? All right.
Dr. Keen?
Did we read the resolution?
Yes.
Yeah, the resolution, yeah.
And second.
Okay, yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
No.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Mr. Brench?
Yes. All right, new business, payment of bills.
Want to get the resolution first and then Scott can answer the questions?
Yep.
Resolve, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the September 12, 2017 Board Agenda Packet.
All right, Scott, what questions we have?
Questions submitted. Mary Ann, if you could please go to Board Book, page 126. On the top, agglomerated Bank of Chicago Annual Administrative Fee. This is the annual fee that we pay for the service of the registrar and paying agent.
What registrar and paying agent? For our bonds?
For our 2015.
Our bonds.
General obligation bond, yes. And also on that page is Applied Mechanical Heat Exchanger. The heat exchanger in Boiler 1 went down at the end of last season. This is the price to purchase the heat exchanger. It still has to be installed before winter.
Do you want to expound on that? We spent a lot of time dealing with the people on the heat exchanger. I thought they were replaced on that half.
The burners, we had new burners put in.
Oh, we had new burners, not heat exchangers?
Correct.
Copy paper, there was a question on copy paper. Do we use the same, why do we use different sources? It seems to vary from department to department. The main paper purchased for the district for our copy rooms is through Midland Paper. We do use the purchasing co-op on those. But the other ones could be specialty paper ordered through instructional coaches for the various departments. That stuff is all handled using department budgets out there, so the sources will vary.
You know, I brought this up in a lot of different areas. Why? It says copier paper. I assume that's accurate. If we're at a big discount for buying any, why are people separately buying copier paper? Why don't we just buy it at the biggest discount and get enough for everybody instead of having it all these different vendors?
If it's specialty paper, then she should.
I understand, but it's just.
She should label it specialty paper.
Description different, otherwise it's coming off as if.
Copy paper, yeah.
Multiple people are buying different copier papers.
And I keep throwing it out when John, people bring up, where could we look? And we always say there's somewhere we could look. I still think we could look at a lot of different areas. I think IT is an example. There's 70 entries on people buying sticks and every kind of imaginable part for computers and backups and all that. And it's like, it seems like if we bought them all centrally with somebody like Mike Connor controlling it, we'd be getting a better, better discount than having everybody who wants something just buy it on their own. And, and I just see it, the copier just jumped out at me because we obviously have a big account somewhere. So why is somebody else even buying copier paper?
I mean, why is it being labeled like that?
Yeah, I'll have to, I can get it labeled differently, get more detail on it.
Get the detail for me and you and I can always put it in the Board's Friday Update.
Okay.
But if it's like invitation, if it was invitation paper for Mary Ann with the alumni achievement, that's not something we can buy through our copier wholesaler. That's like, so I just, we need, we need, we should probably get a little more information on this one. But it's a good point. And I understand for accounting purposes, it makes her, the business office's life easier, like cap the paper, cap your paper. But it does send a mixed message then to the board, like we're not using our purchasing power by folks purchasing. So let's just check into it, okay?
Okay. All right. On Board Book, page 130, with Gordon Fleisch, there's two different payments. The one payment is for our monthly lease and the other one is for our monthly usage for the copiers. So there is two different invoices. We are invoiced monthly on both of them. Board Book, page 131, Illinois High School District Organization Annual Dues. This is basically calculated by a base fee plus our.
I don't remember, is this a new organization we belong to?
No, this is a, this is something I belong to, I don't know, last five or six years. This is all, this is only high school superintendents.
Okay.
And so this was the big group that got the park eliminated and got like the SAT brought back to the high schools. So it's only high school superintendents.
Thank you. I couldn't remember.
Okay, Board Book, page 132, under Kiefer Flooring. This was the district's portion to get the main gym rescreened. Airmark picked up the other portion. It was two thirds, one third.
Remember where we screened?
They sanded it down a little bit and put a fresh coat of finish on it to try to take out some of the imperfections after.
But I thought that was part of the cost of what we hired Kiefer doing to begin?
No, so, so the explanation for this is after our first year of use, like the, the scratches from our ball carts for pulling in and out of the wrestling mats. So like we had to pay the, in the, within the first year, we paid to rescreen some of it. So Kiefer was only coming in to fix the imperfections from the punch list.
Okay.
And so we had him redo the whole floor. So that like where the wrestling mats were being pulled off from under the stage, there were already kind of like track marks. Because if you think about it, new floor was laid, there's only one coat of varnish under the floor. Eventually, when you get three, four coats of the polyurethane built up, it's a little more durable. So when we were pulling in the wrestling mats, basketball racks for PE classes, that there are some scratches and marks. So we had him redo the whole floor and put a second, so now we have two coats of poly on.
Okay, thank you.
Same page, Board Book 132, Lake Cook Distributors Student Novels. These were novels purchased for the English department using the student fees that were collected.
Okay, I looked on their website, the books cost like five bucks. It's like 10,000 novels or something like that. Or we have 1,600 students, why would we need $33,000 worth of novels? I'll leave it, maybe, let's say $10. Almost everyone I looked at was less than $10. So that's 3,300 novels. We have 1,600 students, did we actually buy two novels for every student in this school this year? Do we do that every year?
Yes, in some classes, read more than that. And that's, there's a, I don't know, I would say roughly a $35 fee for every English class. It might be $40 and that covers all their novels for the school year.
Almost, and two of them, probably junior and senior, it's novel quarter, so.
Yeah, I would say four or five.
My son is doing five in his English class.
See, it seemed like a lot of novels.
It's a good goal.
That's good, I mean, it's a rating.
Also on Board Book, page 132, is Life Touch Background Checks. Per the agreement that we signed with our photography company, the district would cover up to five background checks on that, so that was the difference. And that was just to protect our students, to make sure that anyone that's getting filmed at the different times was covered under a background check.
Let's try to make the vendors pay for that in the future, okay?
I know. That was part of it.
Sometimes I don't trust the, the sources they use for their background checks. And so I felt better, like when we go through the Riverside Police Department and we get the FBI.
FBI check.
Well, even if we do pay for it, we can always deduct off their invoice.
Exactly.
So we can get it done if you want to control who's doing the background checks, but then deduct off.
Okay. Scott, make note of that.
And that was it for the Board Payables. Oh, wait, hold on, I want to.
There was a question about refunds, I know that.
Yes, on the checklist thing.
Okay.
But there was a question on the Spanish workbooks?
Yes, so the Spanish workbooks are probably one of our older textbook series. So they're in the process of looking at a new textbook series. They do have some online components with that textbook series, but they're not that, they're not that advanced because the book had been purchased a while ago. So you'll probably see that when we present the textbook plan.
Moving on to the checklist thing portion, Board Book 140, First American Bank with Safety Deposit Box. The district puts their backup emails and the backup server data offsite. That's pretty much what's in there. Board Book 145, Village of Summit. Unfortunately, our driver's education car got a red light ticket. Didn't come to a complete stop making a right-hand turn.
Do we know in what village?
Summit. Got the paperwork with the, with the fixture and everything, I hate to say it.
Does the driver have to pay for that? If I get a red light ticket in a company car, I have to pay for it.
Well, if they're learning how to drive, though, I don't.
I know, I hate to say that, unfortunately, first time for our driver's ed instructor on, on getting anything like that.
I think, Scott, with those though, you can request an appointment because red light camera, the reason I was asking, I know red light camera tickets are not, where they're held in a courthouse, they're usually held at the village hall with an adjudicator.
Okay.
And so we should submit that ticket and request a hearing and ask them to review the video and say, this is a first, first time student taken behind the wheel. Can we have leniency for the school district? And we might be able to get out of paying that. I wouldn't just pay that.
Okay. Board Book 149, question about the Pride Program. This is a new program this year for self-contained study skills classes which services students with social and emotional issues that impact their learning. These items were necessary to get the program up and running at the start of the school year.
It's not the same pride as the Grand Army School goes to the National Conference. Is it that same organization?
No, Pride is a, is a name that we came up with. It used to be called, we had two classes, I presented earlier this, I think it was in the summer. We had our social thinking class and our social emotional learning class and they combined to be the Pride Program.
Yes, you did tell us that.
And there was a question, I'll just put it in general, about refunds that are out there. All the refunds have to do with either students who were waived, students who had schedule changes or students transferring out of the district. All these are checked and verified based off of their free and reduced application that has been submitted or based on the schedule changes with course fees that vary or what were outstanding for transfer students out there.
So it's just like the time of the year?
Yeah.
Which is why there were so many?
Mm-hmm, and then you'll see some potentially with a pay to participate that may come up where they may never participate. So just keep an eye out on those.
No other questions, Scott?
No other questions on bills?
No other question on the bills.
There were two questions about two coaches that were paid.
They did have, we have current background checks on those, coaches that were paid as far as.
Neither one of them were listed as coaches that we approved, nor were they.
But that was for summer camps that were generated with, that were offered during the summer for the different age levels with it. So it's more or less a volunteer.
So when you give us, that I asked for, when you give us the break even for the summer, you'll give us the analysis for football?
Yes.
That one person who was paid $800 who isn't a regular coach?
Yeah.
So we, in the summer, they can have whoever they want?
Yeah, I mean, the basket, we've gone over this with the board before, like the basketball brings in the kids that are like high school age to help coach the youth camps and stuff like that. The key of the board was that one, because there was so many people doing like some of those camps, we had to have a background check on file before we make.
Okay, so everybody has a background.
Yes, everyone has a background check. Everything was cost neutral to the district.
When will, when will, is that the end of this month?
The next meeting.
We'll have the summer camp report?
Along with summer school.
Any other questions, bills?
Thank you.
All right.
Gotta take a vote.
We haven't, yeah, we already did the, gotta take the vote.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jessica Key?
Yes.
Mr. Bridge?
Yes. Talk on the approval of Title One District Plan?
Okay, so every year, uh, the school district receives Title One dollars. This is, uh, federal dollars paid through the state uh, to help support at-risk programming for school districts. Um, students that are labeled at-risk in your Title One plan are usually your free and reduced lunch students. Um, so majority of the services are, this started back when there was no Child Left Behind, and it was money dedicated from the federal government paid through the state on how you were going to help students who did not have, um, possibly the resources at home or were considered at-risk, or were free and reduced lunch, or homeless. How they, the school district was going to use this money to provide either additional services or supports to help them raise their test scores and get them to, to meet, uh, state requirements, uh, on the state tests like the ACT. Um, so one of the, it's a formality that the board at least just, uh, approve or be aware of the Title One plan and the ideas we're putting forward in the Title One plan. So I'll have Kristen and Scott touch on these. They're all items that you're aware of. Um, we use it for, like, academic support, um, hero, transportation of homeless students. Uh, the, the, the unique thing about this is that this is kind of interchangeable. Again, one of those weird things about school finance, you approve this and they could deny one or two of these things, and then we have to come back with something else. One of the other pieces of legislation that just recently got approved by the state legislature was they used to, like, provide, charge us an additional tax on any certified staff member that we were paying out of Title One dollars. Instead of just paying the required nine point four percent or ten point four percent, they used to charge us thirty point four percent out of our Title One funds, the state.
TRS.
TRS. But that was, that new legislation was adjusted now so that if we wanted to hire a teacher to be a tutor or do more sections of Apex and pay for it out of Title One, we're not penalized as much. What used to be, uh, the trick of the trade for the schools with Title One dollars was trying to come up with ways to spend this money but not necessarily hiring teachers doing things like academic support or after-school programs because you were, you always had this fair of paying the thirty percent tax on any employee you used. And now with the new legislation, it will help, um, allow us to maybe even put more teachers, um, in front of some of these interventions.
Are we targeted assistance or are we school-wide?
Targeted.
Targeted. And want to explain that, Scott, the targeted?
That's why I put it in there.
Well-
Educators know what Title One means. I bet if we took a vote here, most people don't even know what Title One, Title One of what? It's money that passes on why. I don't know if this is much of a plan. It doesn't say how we're going to, how we, how do we get, how do we request money? How do we get money, how much money is available?
Part of that blue cab is, is Title One, right?
Yes.
The blue cab bill.
So is, why don't we take the opportunity, because we throw Title One, like, everybody knows what Title One means? And I don't think, I don't understand it. I'm guessing a lot of people watching don't understand it. So why don't we start with the basics?
Okay. All right, Dr. Skink has, uh, touched on it. It's for at-risk students. Obviously, it's to close the achievement gap.
And at-risk students are?
Anyone that is showing signs, anyone that is showing signs of not meeting standards? Not meeting state standards?
Okay.
Or falling behind academically, either credit-wise or, um, I guess, attendance-wise, how you identify them.
And the state lets, the state lets, uh, each individual school, um, I've come up with these specific criteria that they use to identify, uh, Title One students. So we use, um, free and reduced lunch, we use, um, students not meeting, um, benchmarks on either our MAP tests that our freshmen take, our A- ACT, our SAT, and then also students who are credit deficient as well.
That's the thing I didn't understand. It says we're approving a plan, but this isn't actually a plan. Is this the plan?
It's a summary of the activities, so the board's aware. That's basically our plan. Here's how we're spending this money.
So the district already has identified a Title One population, and it's been identified years before. And each year, when you're saying this plan is type, you have bullet points on what you're identifying, where you're going to target spending the money because you already identified that these, the population that we call on Title One would need these supports and that, that we feel comfortable, we're going to get the money reimbursed because, is that-
Yes.
The overall big picture. So we were just getting a summary-
It's just a summary.
Uh, where we're, we're targeting to get the reimbursement.
How much Title One money do we actually get?
It's roughly, roughly a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Out of our twenty-two million dollar budget.
And how many students are eligible? How many fit into your definition of Title One at-risk students?
Uh, I would say roughly forty, forty-five percent. Um, it might be a little higher because some students might fall into multiple categories, other students might only have one category.
So when you say we ma, we get a hundred and, would you say a hundred and thirty?
A hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Do we go and submit for four hundred or five hundred and the state only comes back and says, no, you're, you're capped at a certain? What is that, what's the limit? Is there a limit?
It's all based off of a formula based on a total enrollment and then your free and reduced lunch counts at a various picture at a particular time.
So under this new funding model that was just recently approved, we could possibly see an increase in our Title One. It's all, it's all this, that's why, even though they passed this new legislation, they don't know how they're going to fully implement all that.
But you just described two different parameters. One is forty, forty-five percent of our students meet our definition of at-risk, which makes some part of what you're going to explain, our program eligible for the funds. But then you said the funding is based on-
For some free-
Percentage of free and reduced.
Free and reduced lunch, so there's, starts with a complete disconnect.
Right. We try to expand our parameters?
Yeah.
So that we can use it to, on more kids.
And, and the state gives you that flexibility by allowing you to define it in a more broader sense.
So they'll only give you money based on free and reduced, but they'll allow you to use the funds for a broader group.
For different supports and implementation of different programs.
Kind of like the treasurer's office a little, okay?
Well, again, I, I've got a little concern with the statute, says we have to per, approve a plan. I don't know that this is actually a plan.
So there's, it's not necessarily a statute, it's, it, what great, the grant, the, there's people at the state that'll say, okay, does your board know what you're using these dollars on? So it's educating the board, and here's how we plan on using our Title One dollars for it. So that we're not saying we're using it for academic support, and they came here and did an audit, and the board will be like, we never heard of academic support. Or we never heard of hero system. It's the checks and balances that the board knows what we're putting in on the grant.
So we, we have no control on how much money they'll send us or we're actually eligible for.
Nope.
But once we get it, we're limited to spend it on the programs that we have.
Which is why we use a broader definition.
And so at the end of the day, we spend money on programs that would meet our definition of Title One that doesn't come from the Title One funds.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah. Like, our reading program would be a great example of that.
We only get, use a little portion of Title One, and the rest of the district pays for our, our budget.
So why do we spend, you know, a lot of times you put these notes in the budget, that's Title One money. So there's, because there's a complete disconnect between it. We need to know, you know, the fact something's Title One is almost irrelevant. And we're saying it's like an offset, right?
Well, we tried to, when we say, when you see that note in the budget, I think what we're trying to say is it's not coming directly out of our revenue sources or tax dollars.
If there's, if we could, if all the bu, but projects that you list here, how much would it cost us to fund all of these? Do we know?
Well, roughly a hundred and thirty-five.
No.
Oh, he said, oh. If we do the total cost minus the one thirty-five.
No, no, all the things that, if you take forty percent of our students that are el, you define as Title One, and all the programs that we're spending to help them with them, how much is that?
Gosh, I don't know. We'd have to go through in more detail because we have extended re, we have extended reading, we have sophomore reading, we have extended math.
It's a lot more than a hundred and thirty-five dollars, right? So when we say this is funded by Title One, it's a jigsaw puzzle, because instead of saying that line, we could say this line could be titled. We could use it for anything that fits our definition, right?
Correct, and at the end of the day-
Is our entire hero tracking system paid for by Title One? Is there anything listed by our plan that we're not putting any dollars into? Is that, I, I think that's what, so it's like all of our academic support?
Yes, but at the end of the day, I think to Tim's point, we would still be advocating that we need these things. So if we took one of these things out of Title One and shifted something in, we would still, I would still be advocating to spend that money.
We're on the same page there. It just doesn't make any sense to say this is being paid with Title One funds because you're just randomly picking what you're paying with Title One funds.
But we have to say what we're spending our Title One funds on, and that it has to comply with-
I don't disagree with that, but if we're getting a hundred and thirty-five thousand and, or we're spending a million three hundred and fifty thousand to put on a budget line, this is paid with Title One funds is just a random choice that we make. We could put it on a different line.
Well, but, well. But not some line, I mean, not, not every line, you couldn't put it on a transportation line, you couldn't put it on-
Wait, I'm, I'm missing my point.
I'm a little confused, how, how do we show it in the budget?
You'll see, sometimes we'll get things, this is paid with Title One funds.
Like in the one we have.
We'll have discussions.
Yeah.
But the point is, we choose what we want to use to Title One funds, and they don't come anywhere near paying for all the things they could pay for. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We just have to justify that we're spending Title One funds on-
Well, the point is, I've asked questions about this, don't worry about it, we're paying with Title One funds. Well, I do worry about it because Title One doesn't cover anywhere near what we could if they funded the whole thing. We're, we're picking- I understand what you're saying. Particular item. If we say it's academic sport, don't worry about it, it's Title One, well, then what about summer school salaries? They could be Title One. They're not. So like, I go back to my question, Kristen, so, like, for academic support personnel, two point four FD, is that total academic support? So we pay a hundred percent of our personnel for academic support out of Title One dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason we choose to do that line instead of one of the other ones?
We do that one, um, for example, we used to do reading, um, but we, we were experiencing the penalty, and so probably four years ago we shifted over to academic support personnel because they're not certified staff members, so we don't incur that penalty.
Okay.
So that's why we choose to do that.
And that's where we have all of our students that are necessarily struggling somewhat academically or need some help, they have to take an academic support advice.
Correct, that also covers our, um, credit recovery program, um, that you heard about earlier tonight from Beth.
Okay.
Summer school salaries, for example, um, we do not cover the entire, entire cost. We use a portion of Title One, um, to cover the cost of students who are free and reduced lunch that enroll in summer school so that we can, um, break even and offer more opportunities for students in the summer school. So, um, you'll see the report at the next board meeting. I believe this year it's roughly around six thousand dollars um, that we allocated to that, and that varies from year to year based off of how many students that are free and reduced lunch enroll in summer school.
But there's a complete disconnect between what we're spending and what could be Title One and what we have Title One, so-
Correct.
I, I think it's a bit of a disservice to the board and everybody to say that's paid with Title One funds because you choose, you could choose seven different items here and we don't get enough funds for it, we just choose which is paid with Title One, right?
Right, no, I understand your point. It also helps with the accounting, should we ever get audited or anything of that nature, we can run a report and see here are the things that we use Title One money for. But we can certainly clarify that moving forward.
Why don't you quickly go through your list, just so everybody's aware, make sure, say we did this.
Um, hero tracking system, you've heard, you've heard about that, um, through Dave Mannan. Um, it helps us identify, uh, at-risk students who have poor attendance, since that's strongly correlated with, um, their academic performance. Professional development, um, this is used for teachers to attend conferences and workshops specifically to acquire strategies in working with our at-risk students. So reading conferences, math conferences, things of that nature. Um, transportation of homeless students, we've talked about progress monitoring systems. So in addition to ACRA, we use MAP as, at the freshman level to progress monitor our students. Um, they use that system in junior high, so it's a great way to, um, continuing to monitor their progress for one more year. And then System Forty-four is, um, a reading program. That's for students who, um, aren't quite ready for Read One Eighty, which is the software program that we use, um, in our freshman and sophomore reading class. So we have some students that need some additional support outside of Read One Eighty, um, and so we use System Forty-four for that. Um, and then diversity and anti-bullying, uh, training, um, in, on October third, we are going to have a company called Bulldog Solution come and provide an opportunity for about three to four hundred students as well as, um, around fifteen staff members, um, to participate in a full day of training on, um, diversity, acceptance, tolerance, anti-bullying, um, and then talking about empowering the students to be change agents. They're often the first ones that really see, um, some of the more subtle bullying that, you know, staff may not see, um, so that they can stand up and, and address that. Um, we have a great culture, but we can certainly, um, improve that, and that's one thing that we heard from the students, um, last year, is to try to seek out an opportunity like that. So the students are really excited about that opportunity, um, and the applications, um, for students that are interested in participating just went out, uh, today to students and parents as well, um, and those are due next week, so we're really excited about that. Um, and we also do plan on having follow-up, um, opportunities throughout the year to, um, expand that past the three or four hundred students that are participating in that.
So, Scott, there's no kind of grant or application we put in? Just, the state just does a calculation and sends us a check each year?
It's entered in the grant. I have to take the snapshot of this particular date, what our enrollment, what our enrollment is, and what was our free and reduced count, and that's entered into the grant.
So we do have to submit it?
Yes.
But it's specific, just based on-
Specific.
Specifically based on the formula, yes. The plan, um, has been gone through with our, um, ISBE rep. All the stuff that has been entered into the plan has been approved with the one, with, as far as the supports that we're going to implement. The only thing that is pending is the board approving, moving forward with the plan.
As part of the grant, we wanted to tell them how much it's going to cost us to do all the items here.
Sure, we lay that out.
That'll be laid out in the budget detail section.
We have to submit.
So what we're going to put on the bullets of what, it's going to be a lot more than what they're going to reimburse us that way?
No, we put down what the percentage, we take our one thirty-five and say we're using ten thousand from our one thirty-five to cover-
Cover hero.
A portion of our progress monitoring system, we're taking twenty thousand on it, and we get to a total of one thirty-five. And then every quarter, we have to submit a report to show that that much expenditure report that we've spent that much.
Does any of these cost a hundred and thirty-five all by themselves?
Uh, no.
Do two of them cost a hundred and thirty-five thousand?
No.
Do less than the whole list cost a hundred and thirty-five thou? You just, hold on, you just told me that if we, forty percent of our students fit our definition of at-risk, and it would be a lot more than a hundred and thirty-five thousand if we counted all of it. So, there's a, again, I'm getting a disconnect.
I mean, we have a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to work with.
Forget what we're getting. I asked what the cost is.
I think, the costs are much greater.
It's much greater, this is just a, just as a supplement to the programs.
So let's, let's assume for a-
So for example, how much is, how much does transportation of homeless students cost us a year, roughly? Don't, I don't want, I'm not going to, but what do you think it's going to cost?
Um, total, but maybe thirty-five thousand, total.
Okay, how much does, how much is the, the academic support for two point four FDs roughly?
About fifty-nine thousand.
And the summer school salaries?
Uh, give or take six, seven thousand.
And the hero tracking that you're going to allocate to, you, you allocate part of the hero tracking to this or one hundred percent of the?
Would be probably one hundred percent.
And how much is that?
Um, probably be close to nine thousand.
The expensive one, I would think, is the MAP, System Forty-four, ACRA.
That's about thirty-five thousand.
ACRA's thirty-five thousand alone, isn't it? Wait, then you got to go back and, you, there's a disconnect in what you, to, to our answering questions. If forty percent of our students we define as at-risk, that could be eligible for it, there's more programs than a hundred, you said there's more than a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, we have more programs, we just don't have more Title One money to pay for.
I understand that. Trying to find out why we don't pick one program that costs more than a hundred and thirty-five thousand for all of our at-risk students and just put one line item on there and track it against one thing, since we can't get reimbursed for all of it anyway.
It helps you to try to come up with some other interventions, some things that you can do, small things that you can do, like an after-school program or paying for kids to go to summer school. So instead of just building that to our, I mean, we try to- So instead of just building that to our, I mean, we try to come up with ways to spend this money.
I would say the other, the other big thing too is certified salaries would be the one-line item that you could use. And prior to this, there was a huge penalty, so that's why...
No, there is.
There still is.
There still is, but it's just not as big as it used to be.
It's not a penalty, it's just you have to pay the TRS tax.
And then all these items are directly linked to how we're going to use these in the plan to identify and put these supports in and try to assist them in getting back to where they need to be academically. So written in the plan is how we're going to use academic support. How do we use the hero tracking?
Here, let me, here, this, Scott, maybe this is another way to look at it, all right? Let's say that we want to apply the 135 to academic support for the 45% population. That would be a lot more FTEs, right? Okay, so when we come and look at a budget next year and say, we want to cut out, you know, we want, you know... So these programs can't be, maybe there's a program in here that we're adding on because we're getting a Title I that we can say, no, allocate the Title I to the FTE for academic support and we want to cut that program out. I think that's what ultimately the drive to what I think Tim's driving at is that are these what the programs added on? Or are these programs that, you know, because we're getting a Title I and if we allocated the Title I 100% to the 45% population, this, this program would go away? That's kind of the way to look at it also.
Well, but like, for instance, if my son was struggling in reading, we don't, we're not, we don't qualify for free and reduced. So does that mean you shouldn't academically support my child because...
That's why I was trying to get him to explain it. There is, one, we define our at-risk however we want to define them.
Which allows us to...
Which would allow us to use whatever programs we want for those students, which is be a lot more than 135,000. The state funds it based on their definition at-risk, which is free and reduced. And all we need to do is submit enough information to get 135,000 funded.
Right, but if you get a grant checker there that says, hey, you're only submitting one thing to help your free and, your at-risk kids and you're only going to put academic support, we're not going to approve that. We want to see more interventions. So by putting more down, it allows us to spread that money across and it gives us the flexibility to spread it across more.
Okay.
And help those kids who are struggling, who don't meet the free and reduced...
Correct.
Definition, like, right?
Well, but we've, we're doing that already. We, we are addressing 40 to 45% of our students fit our own definition of it. And the cost for that is much greater than 135, so we are funding it. I'm not saying don't fund it. I'm saying...
Part of this is, part of this is playing the game to get the Title I approval.
Since it's a hot button with Tim to begin with, what happens if we say, the board says, no, you cannot use Title I money to fund ACR and, and we want, and we need to look at cutting back on, on spending money next year? Put that 35,000 to additional academic support for that 45% population and let's look at how... And then you're going to come and say, well, ACR is going to be self-funded from district money and we can come back and say, ACR is no longer funded by Title I.
Yeah, it's probably a bad example considering.
But no, that's what I'm, but it's not a bad example from the standpoint that that's an additional item brought into the budget because the argument is it's been funded by Title I.
You could use that. The big thing is the data that we're getting from there, which the Board of Education is helping us identify who truly is at-risk.
I'm just throwing it as, I'm throwing that as an example.
That's not the point.
I get what he's saying and I get what you're saying.
The point is, you keep saying, don't worry about ACR, it's funded with Title I.
All right.
The way you're telling us, you could define Title I, there's all kinds of programs that are expansive, available for Title I funds. So we're picking, the administration is picking things and saying, these we're funding with Title I, so don't worry about it. And, and I've said all along, like, can't we use the money for something else and not fund that?
Well, Tim, do you have an issue with any, so we have to, we have to allow our administration to make good decisions. So are you saying now that you have a problem with some of the programs that our administration chose? And that's what you really want them to do is to not have any of, something up here on the list? Because our administration is telling us they want to buy these things and they got a grant.
But it's for the board to decide how money is spent.
No, 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 no. The board hires the superintendent, he runs the district. We don't tell them how to spend every dollar. No, no.
I'm not saying any of these programs are bad. In fact, I think they're all good programs.
So we're kind of crossing the line here, telling them how to spend every dollar.
No, we're not.
So I think, I think, I think from the standpoint when we do...
Yeah, we're starting to do staff business here.
Going forward, scrubbing the budget, we just can't default on it's funded by Title I. We're, we're going to have, we'll be more educated now to say...
Exactly.
So...
So if Kristen comes to me and says, I want to run an after-school program, and I'm going to say, we're already at a $326,000 deficit. And she says, listen, I have 10,000 remaining from this 135 I didn't use and I don't use any different district revenue source except Title I. I said, if you, if you can figure out how to run an after-school program without, that's how that, this kind of works. So she'll come to me, like last year, we had a lot, we had a history of a lot of students with substance abuse and having some issues. So we use Title I money to pay for a Rosenkranz Council or an after-school drug and alcohol council. We didn't use any district funds we paid for that.
And that is why she spots.
And it goes into the budget. What we need to know is what is the cost for all the programs that are available to the 45% of the students that we consider at-risk? It's a heck of a lot more than 135,000. And then if we're using the Title I funds for a particular thing, instead of a not-particular thing, that means the district is funding that out of its regular source.
Right, but in order for the state to approve even that 135, it's got to line up with that person be sitting behind the state desk, not the board's desk. So even though the board might say, hey, under our definition, this 45%,
She told us that she...
It gives us some flexibility to argue this to the state. But if the state comes back and says, you know what, this doesn't look like it's helping at-risk kids enough, they just deny it. Then we got to come and rewrite it or pick a different program to support.
And to Laura's point, that's what we pay them to figure out.
Well, you could keep making the point and I don't agree with it. I don't agree that if, if we're defining 40 to 45% of our students are at-risk, the cost that the district is paying to help the at-risk, which I have no problem with as a general premise, most of it's coming out of the district funds, not the Title I.
Right, but while we're asking you to approve is how we're going to spend the 135.
I understand that, that's what you'd like to do today. And for seven years I've been on this board and people say, Title I, don't worry about it, they pay for it. And what we're finally learning today is we choose what...
You mean what you're finally learning today? Because I've understood this.
Well, then, great, I'm sorry.
I have not understood it, so I really appreciate what Tim's doing.
What we're learning today is, there's all these alternative choices to use Title I funds, but we decide that we're going to use these. And that is something that should be made perfectly clear to the board. And I disagree with the fact that how we choose which bank account our funds come out of is an administrative choice. I think that, as Gary said, if, you know, ACR comes up next year and we say, again, is it worth the money? Maybe not, then we say no to that and we use the Title I funds for something different.
Right, the board could do that.
No, I understand, I understand that. These are all things that regardless of whether we use Title I money or district money, I would be continuing to advocate for Dr. Skinkis that we would need all of these things. So in my opinion, whether it's paid out of Title I or not paid out of Title I and it's paid out of the district, these are all valuable things that we need in addition to all of the other things.
That part I completely agree with. What I don't agree with is for years we've been hearing, don't worry about that, ACR is paid for Title I.
So we have, so you know what you spent last year, fiscally, year 17 on Title I, right?
Yeah, it's a Title I grant.
We have to like quarterly show how much we're paying.
Well, we got 135 last year and we spent 135. But with Tim's point, he's getting at, he said 135, there may be things in there.
Well, I know because as we go along and we look...
30 grand it could have been spent into what the district...
As we look at the checkbook, they're like, oh, it's Title I, it's Title I, it's Title I. Because that's what you're hearing is when we're looking at the checkbook, right?
Right.
And that's where I want to, you know, but if we know, I mean, you know, I use Blue Cab all the time. The state could come back and say, well, do you have kids that are free and reduced lunch in your reading class? Yes. Well, then you should only have a portion of your Title I dollars being applied to that reading class. That's what you can start getting into.
Well, we understand it.
We understand that, okay.
All right, we never did do the resolution.
In the future, I think it would help, Scott, we put a dollar amounts by each of these and kind of show how this breaks out and spends our one, our lot of money that we are projected from the state. So the board can see this is accounting for this much.
Resolve that Board of Education Township High School District to Oahu County, Illinois hereby approves that District Title I Plan as presented in the September 12, 2017 Board Agenda Packet.
I'll second. All right, is there any other more questions left, right? No, go for the votes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
No.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes.
All right, we have the approval of G17 disclosure engagement letter, Raymond James and Associates.
Liz, you want to come up to the table, please? Liz Hennessy from Raymond James. Okay, so the Board of Education, I went through this with you in August. When Elizabeth gave her presentation in July, and I believe we used, even in June, she was part of William Blair. William Blair shortly after our July board meeting closed, or canceled, closed their department on municipal bond sales. And so Liz was moving over to Raymond James and Associates. And we discussed this in August with the board that we'd like to continue to work with Ms. Hennessy and her team under Raymond James. At that August board meeting, I touched on the G17. So what the G17 is, it's a disclosure and engagement letter. It basically says Liz Hennessy will serve as our underwriter for our bond purchases. And what this underwriter does is provides us scheduling, that service schedule and our options. And by signing this agreement, it's...
Say that again, what's, what's the underwriter going to do?
The three things, go ahead, Liz, the three primary responsibilities.
We advise the board on structure, timing, terms of the options you're considering, including the refunding and the life safety in terms of cash. We then underwrite the bonds, bring them to market, work with you, the rating agency. All that can be done as underwriter. So it's a, the G17...
Can you stop at the first part? What do you advise us on?
The structure, timing and terms of any debt issues you're considering.
Can you help us out then, because I had a long conversation with Dr. Skinkis about this. And apparently we approved this while I was on the board with your last one, but now that we're issuing it as... Your letter specifically says that you aren't a financial advisor and that you're not acting in our best interest and that we should consider having our own financial advisor.
Yes, that is the letter that we need to, to send you to advise you that there could be a conflict of interest when issuing the bonds as underwriter if we, because the underwriter, like all other parties, are paid based on the size. So they're talking about the conflict of interest. If we encourage you to issue more bonds than you otherwise would, that could be a conflict of interest. But these are the standard things we're required to disclose to you per the SEC's Rule G17. So we are not acting in the role of an independent municipal advisor, although we could take that rule, which would be different than you'd have to hire a separate underwriter. This is how we've worked with the district in the past. And as underwriter, we have the ability to give you advice. It's just we're telling you through this G17, we are not a municipal advisor. And if you wish to, you certainly have the ability and the right to go ahead and hire a separate municipal advisor, get a separate second opinion on the information that I provided in this role as underwriter.
And the fees that Raymond James charges as part of their underwriter, Scott has reported out and put, I think, in the background, she as well was, are lower than what the fee structure was under William Blair.
Correct.
Explain that to us, that doesn't help.
Well...
It was this, it is this, and it's how much.
It's, yeah, it was, I believe, $6.50 per thousand of bonds sold at William Blair. And at Raymond James, we're proposing $6.35 per thousand of bonds sold. That's typically the way the fee is charged. So it's lower at Raymond James.
And how much, if we issued $5 million of bonds, how much is that?
So that's...
You want a calculator, Liz?
Yeah, I got to do it, because I'll screw it up, you know?
Kevin, may I ask you this? Is this different from William Blair in terms of his first issue we just discussed?
This is the same exact agreement we were under with William Blair, we just have to not do it for Raymond James.
So for a $5 million bond issued times $6.35 per bond, that equates to a fee of $31,750.
And I also asked Dr. Skinkis, there's an exception under the state contracting where we don't have to send out for bids hiring you.
Because it's a professional service, yes.
Professional service requirement, I did verify with district legal counsel today that this is not subject to bid. Just is no different than like when we picked a district attorney or if our district attorney that the board had relationship with moved to a different firm. It's a level of expertise that's considered exempt. So before we go, the reason this is placed on where it is in the agenda is so that before we get into our discussion tonight on the life safety bonds and the taxable working cash bonds, we formally approved our G17 so that Liz is formally serving as our underwriter. There was not, I don't know if you all recall this on August when I explained it, but once she, she signed with Raymond James on the Monday before the board meeting, so the board had no time to see the G17. So I told you that this would be on there as a, you know, we'd have to approve this in August.
Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District to Oahu County, Illinois hereby approves that Raymond James and Associates Inc. G17 disclosure and engagement letter to act as the district's bond underwriter as presented in the September 12, 2017 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Do we have any discussion left on the right? Go for the vote.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Welsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next then item is, our next item is the life safety. The background sheet with the explanations is very similar for both. But in August, the board, one of the proposals the board saw was 3C1. And we attached that just in case you need to reference that. And the breakdown there and the discussion we had was this was refinancing the 2007 debt using the proceeds or the savings from the 2007, the savings, excuse me, the savings from the 2007 referendum bonds, using those savings from the refinance to finance the 2 million in life safety separately and then also to consider 3 million in taxable working cash. The board in August, after our discussion, thought it was best to keep the 2 million in life safety separate so that in the event we don't approve the 3 million or through the petition process, if the 3 million was voted down or rejected, that we can still address the 2 million in repairs for the life safety repairs that need to be done under the school code and on our life safety report. So I broke these two up on the agenda so we make sure we're, we're doing two, two separate things. One would be approving that. We have to still wait from the state, we have not heard back from the state if they approve the full 2 million or if they're going to approve less than the 2 million. But in the event, we should say not to exceed the 2 million in the life safety bonds that will address the remaining life safety work at Riverside Brookfield High School or District 208. So if we're sticking with just the life safety, was there any concerns with doing the life safety bonds?
Well, the one thing is we don't know how much the state's going to approve yet, right?
We put in...
What was the amount we put in the total?
Just under 2 million.
All right, so can't, it won't go up?
Correct.
But if, what if they like approve a million and a half?
That's all, that's all we can bond, a mission and a half. And they will reject specifically or specifically say what work we cannot address based on what we put in in the itemizer report. So if they don't approve the air conditioning unit that we put in for the pool, then that's how they would take that off.
Should we change the resolution?
Should we say not to exceed?
Well, but not to exceed what the state board approved?
2 million or the lesser of.
Right, lesser of.
What the state board approved. 2 million or...
2 million or what the state board approves. Do you know the exact amount we put in for life safety?
I believe it was 1,980, 1,980,000.
We can leave it at 2 million, just to be safe.
Will we know this before we issue the bonds?
Yes.
Yeah.
You cannot issue the bonds until we receive the formal approval from the state.
Okay.
Then that starts the ball with Liz and her firm. All right. Resolve the Board of Education, Township High School District, 201, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves financing the 2007 B, refinancing, excuse me, the 2007 B referendum bonds and using the savings to issue life safety bonds not to exceed the lesser of $2 million or what the state board approves pending state board of education approval. You okay, Dan?
Do we want a second, Dan?
Second.
Any additional comments left on the right?
Yeah, so, and I understand, is I just want to verify it again, this is just for the $2 million, even though it says to recommend-
This is strictly, the resolution is just-
We're not doing that. We're just doing the 2 million.
This resolution is just one is all they're going to do.
This resolution is just the life safety bonds, because we're going to have a total different discussion on the 3 million working-
Right. That's whether-
That's good.
And the life safety bonds are going to pay for life safety work that in theory, by the board, state board approving them, the safety of our students and people in the building, so, and that's a reason that you can issue the amount as long as you have the bonding capacity without needing voter approval.
Correct.
Because you have, once they approve it, we have to do the work anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Marian?
Marian, go for the vote.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Richman?
Yes. All right, now we have a different discussion on working in cash bonds.
The Board can turn to the Board Book. So option 3C-1 was the, was doing the 3 million in taxable working cash, and the Board of Education asked for me to check with legal counsel and through Liz on whether or not the working cash bonds could be taxable or non-taxable. The opinion that we received back from the attorney is that the only non-taxable working cash bonds that could be issued have to go for capital improvements. If we issued those bonds and we were able to reach a deal with a local entity for a long-term lease, we could not use any of that money for any type of payment to secure that lease or to pay off that lease. The only, unless there was, it was a lease to own. And we, if we're talking about doing anything with the Forest Preserve, we know that their property is not for sale. So in order for us to have some money to use to help secure possibly Forest Preserve land, or if we have found another purchase of land that we want, a piece of land that we wanted to lease, we would have to use taxable working cash bonds. The flexibility of taxable working cash bonds is that it can be used for anything, which is why there is a 30-day petition window, and where the community can, Liz, you want to go over the specifics?
Sure. So the requirement to authorize working cash bonds involves the Board approving a resolution to issue the bonds, which is on your agenda tonight. Then it would be published in the local newspaper, September 20th. That would begin a 30-day petition period, and if within that time period, 10% of the registered voters submitted a petition to the district, then the issue would have to go to the voters via referendum prior to being issued. There's also a public hearing requirement for the working cash bonds, and also for the life safety bonds.
And tentatively, we would do that in?
October 10th.
The October 10th, or maybe, that's tentative.
Right.
Because we want to make sure we have the state approval before, at least.
You can have the public hearing before you get the state approval on the life safety. Again, whatever is less, whatever the state approves is the amount you can issue, which will be less than 2 million. You cannot, though, pass the bond resolution, which authorizes the sale of the life safety bonds, until you get the state approval.
When do we expect to get the state approval?
Your guess is good, Sam, because we call down there every 20, 30 days.
It's originally, I don't think, it'd be like a 60-day timeline or something.
Could take six months.
Just depends how busy they are with other things. I mean, typically, it's six weeks, but, you know, if they get backed up, I know they're working on all this new legislation with the General State Aid. But, you know, if we get that back by, before the committee, the whole meeting on October 24th, we can go ahead and sell, pass a bond resolution that night, to sell the bonds, all of them together, if you decide to go that way.
So a large, a large portion of this money, as I told you to the Board, is that we're trying to see if we can work on a deal with the Forest Preserve, and see if we can bring back baseball and softball so that they can play on campus like we did with tennis. And so we may need to have some upfront payment money for a long-term lease to work out that deal between the zoo and the Forest Preserve. We would then need some money to restore the fields, because they will need to be restored. And we don't have the money necessarily in reserves to just go and restore the baseball and softball field so that it can be used for PE classes, lower-level practices, competitions, as well as home and away, or varsity, or home competitions for baseball and softball. Originally, when I proposed this, we were talking about the non-taxable, or the, yeah, the non-taxable, because we were going to use it for capital. But then we found out from legal counsel that you can't use any working cash funds to do a lease payment.
What was the spread, Liz, between taxable and non-taxable? It's like 35 basis points or something?
Yeah, the-
Quite true, or something.
So the taxable is, it's about 40 basis points, 293 on the taxable, 251 on the tax exempt. And we did the analysis on the taxpayers, and over that 10-year life, it would only cost the home 10 more dollars on a $350,000 home over the 10-
Overhauled, like a dollar a year?
Yeah. So very minor.
But the, well, I wouldn't say that. The total interest cost would be what, of that four percentage point?
The four, 40 basis points?
Yeah, four basis points. The total cost of the district is like, what?
80?
Well, yeah, it's like 78,000, I think.
Okay.
Over the whole 10 years? So it's $8,000 a year, a dollar a year?
Yeah, it was 70, you told us it was 78,000.
Yeah.
That's about right, John.
So what's the, the lease payment? What would that, what's that money? How much? What do you think? We don't know.
We have to negotiate.
But I don't want, I don't want the, I don't want the Forest Preserve or Cook County to signal that we're willing to give $3 million for a 99-year lease.
Because we're not.
Because we're not.
No, we're not. And I think we're going to use all $3 million to-
I mean, we're just, we just approved a deficit budget, and we don't know what this Board's ultimately going to decide, whether to cut back on programs or to be willing to go. And this would be a way to keep the funding, so I don't want to signal to the Forest Preserve that they suddenly are going to get a $3 million.
Don't signal to them, because that's a non-starter.
Right, it is.
It's not in the realm of possibilities.
Right. So, you know, this, by having it as taxable, it gives us the flexibility to keep it into our operations side of things, and, or if we get, we get it a year from now, they're telling us we have to fund our pension.
Right.
So we don't have to go, we don't have to go to the taxpayer depending on where that is, and we have this available.
So, right, but it also appears, you know, I don't want to say, I don't want to, we just approved this negative budget, but then we're going to borrow money for the baseball field, that if that doesn't happen, we're going to use it for operating expenses.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying the emergency type of, I'm going-
Into that smoke and mirrors, right?
Right, right, which I'm saying is-
We, I mean, I'm all about $3 million for a baseball field. I'm a baseball crazy guy, right? So, and I think it's one of the things we really miss here, is the baseball field. If we had an opportunity to get that, but I, we'd spend all $3 million, you know, fixing a, fixing the existing, because we're taking parking away, we have to do something there for the zoo, and then building those baseball fields, i.e., you know, soccer fields, utility fields, and that like, right?
Correct.
I think that would, that would spend all $3 million, in my opinion, regardless of the lease, because we'd have to continue the lease for a definite 20, 50 years.
I think that the important thing to consider is, there's a lot of uncertainty of what's going to happen with these pensions, like Gary said. If they dump that onto us, that's something we're going to have to consider in this, there's some, we want to consider initially, can we get our space back for our athletes so they don't have to travel, which, you know, we've done some analysis, it would certainly help with two things. It would save costs, because we're busing kids all over the place now. Plus, kids are not participating, because they don't want to travel there. We found that with the tennis, too. Tennis is up again this year. But the other thing is, you know, it's just an opportunity, because of the fact we can recall bonds at a higher rate, and the interest rates are still low, that it makes good financial sense. It doesn't mean you take the money and throw it away at something that the district shouldn't spend money on. It just gives you the flexibility to have the funds available, and we know we'd like to work something out with our fields there. Whether we will or not is still yet to be determined, but the opportunity is there, it's a timing issue, too, which always happens in financing.
So how do we earmark that and put some kind of structured date on it? Like, when is the, it's not going to work out? Is that a 2020 and 2021 date?
So I think he's looking for, Liz, is that if-
No, even start, we can take this money and pay back to the bond, too.
Yeah.
As I said, we could do that.
Yeah.
So if the state funding came-
They are callable?
The, you know, there's not going to be a whole lot of maturities that are callable with a 10-year payback. There might be one or two. It can always abate, so you can call part of them, but abate, you know, to reduce the debt service, the annual debt service is-
Right. And, you know, we wouldn't, taxpayers would get the last four years off, or three years, whatever it might be.
Correct.
And that's, that's a good faith. They didn't, we didn't, we didn't get the pension, and we didn't get a baseball field, so we'll put it back.
Right.
You know, we're not going to use it on solar panels on the roof.
Absolutely. The Board at that time could use it for that, abate it.
Wasn't, okay, could you please clarify the abatement process?
Sure. So the abatement process involves a transfer. So if this money goes into the working cash fund and is not transferred to ONM for your baseball or lease, or whatever you end up doing with it-
By the way, we should say baseball and softball, in case people don't understand.
Baseball and softball fields, yes.
Right, right, and it's a utility field in the middle.
Yes, it's also PE, lower-level soccer.
I mean, we have, we have a lot of different levels of soccer, and they're all trying to play in a football field, right? You know, we can split that up, and we can have guys and girls at the same time playing.
Sorry, Liz.
So you transfer the money from the working cash fund to the debt service fund per resolution, and then you direct the county clerk to reduce the debt service levy by like amount.
So theoretically, we could, okay, so we get the $3 million, and two years from now, this isn't going to work out. So we could, we could, we have a motion to take the 3 million, get it back to debt service, and in the remaining five year, how, how would they abate that?
Well, there's a couple ways you could do it. But, you know, you can determine whether you want to use that 3 million just to pay off the 3 million by abating it every year. You would move a like amount of the debt service, so the debt service, annual debt service is about $350,000. So you transfer that each year and tell the county clerk not to levy that on the taxpayers. So it would be over a period of time, an abatement each year.
And what, we could choose that time, or?
You could do that each year when we submit our levy.
Okay.
Right, but we can only pay so much back on the debt service.
Right, per year.
Remember the interest. So, we're structured to pay that through 2021 anyway.
These negotiations could take two years.
We really couldn't abate anything until 2022.
Well, you could abate it next year, actually, if you wanted to. You could also use that money to abate some of the refunded referendum bonds. So you really have multitude of options to reduce the debt service tax levy with that 3 million, should you not need it for the projects you originally intend. So there's-
Okay, so I know there's an abatement process you just described. Was there a second process? I think you mentioned that at this time.
There is a second process if you have some callable bonds. Now, as we mentioned, these are 10-year bonds, so you might only have two of the years that are callable. So what you could do when you come up to that call date is call in those bonds from investors and just pay them right off. And that's a good deal, because you are paying off the principal and the interest disappears at the call date. So it's like paying off your mortgage early. The only thing is, municipal bonds, unlike mortgages, aren't callable at any time. They're only callable after seven or eight years.
So we'd be paying the interest.
So you could abate up until year seven or eight, and then pay off in year seven, the last two years.
I think the best way to look at this is that by doing the taxable working cash, it provides the Board of Education at this time the most flexibility to address the primary needs, being capital. But it has to be a taxable working cash bond, and in the event, a year or two from now, if there's some issue and there needs to be an operational issue, the Board at that time can determine whether they want to abate that money or use that for, it gives you the most flexibility. None of us consider today and say, hey, what's going to happen in three or four years? But I think the conversation, since there is not anything formally on the table, or the intent is to try to use this, a majority of this, for securing and addressing and repairing and re-establishing athletic fields that the school can have ownership over, primary use of, and conduct all of its after-school and even during-school activities. All right? That's our primary use.
At this point, solely use of it. Not a majority, it's all of it. That's my understanding, the way I want to. We'd have to vote to do it differently.
If that's the case, then have we done an analysis to say what that land is worth?
Right.
We just arbitrarily set $3 million.
Well, I just threw it out there, because-
Right, so if you're, if you're saying it's strictly limited to the use of securing the football, of securing that field and improving it, then to throw the 3 million number out is, to me, not a correct way of doing it.
Plus, even, the other thing we talked about is whether we're going to put, try to put emergency money in there, too.
Yeah, there's a lot of, the other thing is, is that not only is there for restoring that land, but it's also, what's the, how much is the lease going to be, which, again, I think we're starting to-
But, I mean, we're signaling to the Forest Preserve $3 million.
I would say, I think West maybe is saying he's like-
Yeah, Wes, that's what I'm saying.
Rest is one of seven, but the rest of, I mean, the Board understands-
That's what I'm saying, there's, this bond is the-
It could be used for operational as well.
Because I'm concerned about pensions being dumped on.
Yeah, I think the crux of this, are we in discussion right now? We haven't even had the motion?
No, we haven't had a motion.
Haven't had the motion.
Let me read the motion.
This is, no, not yet.
No, no, I would not discuss.
Now, the other issue here is the seven versus 10.
Seven versus 10 years?
Yeah, and I just want to ask you something. One of these charts, it looks like, on the orange bars, there's only like six years, it's not seven. So is that thing really a six-year payback you use instead of seven? I'm sorry I didn't catch this earlier.
Do you want to page it, John?
Where the heck is it?
Looking for the seven-year option, I think it's option two.
Okay, last year's $4, right?
Yeah, so that's, will this, present age, page 17?
Three B, yeah.
Three B?
Yeah.
Look at the orange bars, there's only six of them, and there's not seven.
Yeah, but the, so, the way we did that is the three- Yeah, but the, so, the way we did that is the three million goes out six years, and the light blue bars is a life safety, those go out seven, and so we kind of put those together in that way, to pay the taxable bonds off a little quicker, but altogether, between the working cash and life safety, it's seven years.
Okay, so this, that's not a mistake, it hasn't affected your numbers, it's just, you're referring to the working cash?
To the non-referendum part, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, thanks for answering that. So, this ten-year thing, it's going to cost, ten years versus seven, is like $300,000 to the district, and then extra interest costs, is that correct?
Yeah.
I guess I need to know more of the rationale behind that.
So, let's look at the summary chart, where it's got the taxes to the homeowner over those ten years, you know, and, and we can go back to the seven-year payback, it is shorter, but what it means, and that's option three V...
Mayor, it's the page that's 187, summary of options.
Yeah. It means that in the first, two, three, four, five, six years, they're going to have an increase, net increase, after the refunding of around sixty to, up to seventy-six dollars a year, then it kind of breaks even, and then savings in the last three years. So, the ten-year option was really just a way of making the repayment on the bonds kind of parallel to the savings on the refunding bonds, so that it was just more evenly spread for the taxpayers. But you're right, overall, the interest cost is lower on that option three B with the seven year.
If I could ask Gary or anyone else on the Board, I mean, does that, should that drive your decision on your payback, what the cash effect would be on, you know, the taxpayer versus, we're paying an extra $300,000 in interest cost?
So Liz, if I look at the bottom of your chart, so the common person can understand this, if they did option three B, which is still the two million, well, the three million is capital project bonds, I notice.
Yeah, those are not taxable, but as we saw before, that, oh yeah, I'm sorry, they are taxable, I'm getting my options mixed up. Are they?
No, I don't think they are.
No, they're not taxable.
And so the, the savings is only forty-seven dollars, correct?
Over the life of the bonds.
Three oh three to three fifty.
Yes.
But the percentage points is almost going to make up that difference, because it's a taxable versus a non-taxable.
I mean, I could see that it makes it up, but, but being financial stewards as a board, is that a rational reason? I don't know the answer to that right now. To me, it's almost like, take the seven years, it's cheaper.
Yeah.
Is that, is something wrong with the way I'm thinking?
Well, that seven-year one has to be recalculated, right, with a taxable bond?
It does, but the same thing's going to happen, so, the only reason I went ten-year again was so the savings from the 2007 A-bonds kind of directly offsets the new money cost, the working cash and life safety, so net-net, it's thirty-five dollars a year. In the option three B, it's going to be just a slight increase on that three hundred and fifty dollar, the dollar home, you're right, sixty dollars versus thirty-five, you know? Is that a big deal to you guys, or not? I think...
Did you see that part, John?
Just getting kind of feedback from you on, on that, versus, you're right, the total interest cost is much less for the seven-year...
The seven-year, the cost of tax...
If I'm going to go and tell my neighbors, it's going to cost...
Several years.
Sixty dollars more a year to borrow money we may not use, and we may use in operating costs, because we're running a deficit budget, as opposed to thirty dollars. I think I'd rather say thirty dollars.
I thought the original, but I know, I, I can go all day, I'd say you're saving three hundred thousand, but they're, they're, they're not going to hear that part, they're going to go right onto that sixty dollars.
Well, I just want to have a complete, open, and transparent decision here, and I'm, I'm not a finance person.
I agree with you, John. And, we need to talk...
I mean, it...
But the seven-year treats the, the bonds are tax exempt, right, in option three B, Liz?
Yes.
So if you actually did a comparison for seven years, on taxable, in three B versus three C one, it wouldn't be the forty-seven, the difference is forty-seven dollars, the way you presented it, right?
Right.
And if you did taxable, on three B, it would be less than forty-seven dollars, right?
Right.
So it's five dollars a year for a taxpayer, John, the difference between three B and three C one, the way it's displayed, but three B, the bonds are, are tax exempt, so, you know, you'd add the interest for the fact they'd be taxable, and it, it would go down somewhere, I don't know if it's half, or more than half?
Probably not more than half, but, yeah, it would be a little more...
So there's forty-seven dollars for a taxpayer's difference, and say it's going to be, I'll round it up, twenty-five dollars. So the difference for the taxpayer between the seven and ten years is twenty-five dollars over the, the ten years, so it's two fifty on a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, a year for ten years. And again, I'm not, your question is, does, it makes it a little easier on the district to pay it off, if you do, just like, like people get twenty-year mortgage or thirty-year mortgages, right?
Right. I mean, you gave, you gave a best practice, whatever, for working cash, you want to pay back, like, what did you say, ten years to correlate with?
Well, ten years correlates with the refunding on the bonds, but, you know, we've talked about that debt service extension base, it's kind of a lifeline for you, right? So if you get the pension shift, or you get something that's really hurting your operating funds, you could possibly tap that for additional...
Okay, that, I mean, that's, that's a rational reason.
That's right, so the short, the less interest cost, the more of that debt base you have available down the road, and in this case, three hundred thousand dollars, so, yeah.
Okay.
But it's not three hundred thousand, because...
Because it's taxable.
It's probably half that.
Yeah, it's probably more like two hundred or so, two...
All right.
The big decision the Board needs to make tonight, is whether or not a majority of the Board is willing to start the petition process to approve a resolution to issue the three million in working cash.
Well, let's tie something else to that. We already voted on issuing the life safety. Is it going to, you'll, if we decide we're going to do working cash bonds, and we issue them at the same time, is it a more efficient way to go to the market?
Yes.
That, because you'll, you'll underwrite the five million dollars, likely, will it even be public, or will somebody just buy them all, probably?
Well...
Legal fees and...
Eliminating your additional legal fees, bond rating fees, the more separate issues you do, the more fees, yeah.
So we, we do have some savings that way, to do them together, right?
Right.
Right, we just got to decide whether we're going to do it taxable, or not taxable, right? Is that a fair way to say it?
Right, and, and to Dr. Skinkis's question, do you want to start the petition period and get authorized to go forward with the three million? Because that's kind of the motion...
Right.
On the table.
Well...
Well, we have to do them, can't be taxable, because...
We have to do them taxable, because we have no additional...
Right.
Three million dollar capital expenditures out there. And, and if you go non-taxable, you're restricted to go capital.
Right.
And...
Which is really where I want to go.
But you can...
You know, the things you want.
For a lease payment.
But they're not going to sell the land, they will lease it to us, and definition of a long-term lease is not a capital expenditure.
And then improvements to the, to the field probably are capital expenditures either.
Without of operating, anyway, right?
I doubt if the improvements to the field, would they be capital expenditures?
No.
I doubt it.
We have verified both.
Okay.
If we, let's say, let's say...
It's not a capital improvement.
Let's say we negotiate, let's say we don't, because it's not our land.
It's not our land, so it has to be a lease to own.
We can't do that.
So if we did a thirty-year lease, the money I would use upfront to negotiate the lease, and the money I would use to repair the land, is all has to be taxable, because it's not technically your land.
Other property that we would have to refurbish, in placement of their parking situation, we wouldn't be able to use that.
It's not our land, so it's not considered a capital expense.
Right.
Well...
That's why I got this.
Why we had this discussion?
Yeah, it has to be taxable, to even be able to sit at the table and try to negotiate.
You want me to read the resolution, Gary?
Now you can read it, yes.
Gary?
You can read it, you can read.
And it's okay if we say it's intent?
It's the, all this, it does, it says the Board has the intent, and so now that starts...
Okay.
Once the, the publish goes, goes in the newspaper, then they have thirty days for the day it's posted to, for people to come out and...
Okay. "Result: The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby declares the intention to issue three million dollars in working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of said district and directing the notice of such intention to be published in the manner provided by laws presented in September twelve, in the September twelve, 2017 Board Agenda Packet."
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Laura, second, any further comments left?
Before, I, I want to say something. So, the key to this vote to me, is I think Wes is getting towards it, is the reluctance, for, at least for me, to use any of this three million dollars for anything but the field, or an emergency like the pension. I think it's irresponsible, at least from my sole opinion, to use this money to fund deficit spending. And what I don't want in the future, is some future Board, three, four years from now, taking this money and funding deficit spending. The reason I will vote yes for this, is because I have confidence in Kevin and his approach in running this district, and I have the historical perspective, at least from my point of view, why I voted yes for this. Thank you.
Thank you, John, I'll second that.
Any additional comments? Go for the vote.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Mr. Gretchen?
Yes, now can we have the resolution?
"The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois is declaring the intention to issue three million dollar working cash fund bonds of Township High School District Number 208, Cook County, Illinois, for purpose of increasing the working cash fund of said school district and directing the notice of such intention to be published in the manner provided by law."
Can we get a second?
Second.
I got it.
I'll second, I second that.
Sorry about that, Kevin.
Vote, vote, I'm sorry.
Ms. Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Sorry about that, Gary.
All right, I'm going to, going to change the order of this, because Laura has, we have a couple minutes, and she wants to be involved in the tour request, so we're going to go to the tour request first.
Yeah, I mean, with the press, the press packet, it's just the first...
First read, okay, so then it doesn't do, look at it.
Thank you very much, Liz.
Thanks, Liz.
All right, so then we won't have to, just take a look when you have a chance, see what changes are...
Yeah, we didn't even put the changes in yet, so it's just a general process.
All right, so, let's go to the education, the tour request.
So, two or three times a year, we bring trips to the Board that are beyond the two-hundred-mile radius outside of Illinois, or overnight trips that are not associated with an annual state ski club competition or world football. And so tonight, we have six educational tour requests, but eight trips in total, we look at them in detail. So, the first one submitted was from Erin Cunningham, our Model UN sponsor, and this is an annual trip that she takes her group to on an annual basis. Mario Schirmack submitted three requests for ski club trips, these are also on an annual basis, in the past couple of years, we have them on to all three, because they are weather-dependent. Colleen Stanky and Kim Marata submitted a request for the Illinois Theater Festival at Illinois State University. This is typically a biannual trip, we try to go every other year, so that our students involved in our theater programs have the opportunity to attend. Erin Cunningham also submitted another request for Model UN at the University of Chicago, this is an overnight trip, this is also an annual trip that we've gone on for a while. Aubrey Princeton James Baum submitted a request for the spring break music department tour. This is a slight change, we used to go, one year was band and orchestra, and the next year was choir, with our new choir director. Between Aubrey and James, they have agreed to go and take all of the music students on an every other year basis, and so this will be the first year that they're doing that to New York. And then, lastly, Todd Friedrich presented to you in June for the girls' water polo trip. This is a new trip. All of these trips are at a cost to the district, and so presenting them for you tonight. Are there any particular questions on any of the specific trips?
I asked a couple, some of them don't say what kind of transportation they're going on, and some of them, the cost to the student don't match the facts that were listed there.
Some of them are, some of them are estimates based off of how my students are, are going to go, so...
Yeah, but like, the, one of the ski ones, it says in the fax, it's like three hundred dollars, and on the form, it says it's sixty dollars for the...
I apologize, I didn't perceive...
Kevin kept a secret from me, because I sent him the question.
She got it today, I didn't get it to her yesterday.
I could find it, but, so, I mean, maybe the form just wasn't filled out right, but you can, I mean, I just think if we're going to prove them, we need to know, is it going to cost the student sixty dollars, or four hundred dollars, or whatever one of them said. And I guess my only other question is, the, last year, we approved the...
All right, I'm going to, can I change the order of this, because Laura has to leave in a couple minutes, and she wants to be involved in the tour request, so we're going to go to the tour request first.
Yeah, I mean, the press, the press packet, it's just the first.
First read, okay, so then it doesn't do, look at it.
Thank you very much, Liz.
Thanks, Liz.
All right, so then we won't have to, just take a look when you have a chance, see what changes are.
Yeah, we didn't even put the changes in yet, so it's just the general.
All right, look, so the education tour request.
So, 203 times a year, we bring trips to the board that are beyond a 200-mile radius outside of Illinois, or overnight trips that are not associated with an IFRS, through competition or world football. And so tonight, we have six educational tour requests, but eight trips in total, we look at them in detail. So, the first one submitted was from Erin Cunningham, our Model UN sponsor, and this is an annual trip, that she takes her group two on an annual basis. Mario Schirmack submitted three requests for ski club trips, these are also on an annual basis, and the past couple of years, we haven't gone to all three, because they are weather dependent. Colleen Stanky and Kim Marata submitted a request for the Illinois Theater Festival at Illinois State University. This is typically a biannual trip, we try to go every other year so that our students involved in our theater programs have the opportunity to attend. Erin Cunningham also submitted another request for Model UN at the University of Chicago, this is an overnight trip, this is also an annual trip that we've gone on for a while. Aubrey Princeton James Baum submitted a request for the spring break music department tour. This is a slight change, we used to go, one year was band and orchestra, and the next year was choir, with our new choir director. Between Aubrey and James, they have agreed to go and take all of the music students on an every-other-year basis, and so this will be the first year that they're doing that to New York. And then, lastly, Todd Friedrich presented to you in June for the girls' water polo trip. This is a new trip. All of these trips are at no cost to the district, and so presenting them for you tonight. Any particular questions on any of the specific trips?
I asked a couple, some of them don't say what kind of transportation they're going on, and some of them, the cost to the student don't match the facts that were listed there.
Some of them are, some of them are estimates based off of how many students are going to go, so.
Yeah, but like, one of the ski ones, it says in the fax, it's like $300, and on the form, it says it's $60 for the.
I apologize, I didn't receive the question.
Kevin kept a secret from me, because I sent him the question.
She got it today, I didn't get it to her yesterday.
I could find it, but, so, I mean, maybe the form just wasn't filled out right, but you can, I mean, I just think if we're going to approve them, we need to know, is it going to cost the student $60 or $400, or whatever one of them said. And I guess my only other question is, the, last year, we approved the music group to go down to Florida, right? Was it Florida?
Don't believe they went last year, I believe that was the year before.
Somebody went last.
Somebody went on a music trip, because we asked a bunch of questions.
Because they go every other, it might have been either.
Might have been Diane's choir.
Or it might have been band, but now they're.
Whatever, some music group went on a trip last year, where they're actually doing some performances, which was the sell part on that. The, when you read the agenda for a trip to New York, it sounds like a tourist trip, not a, like, it doesn't sound like you're going to engage in acting or anything.
In New York, and so, I apologize if that wasn't brought to the forefront, because they're really excited about that opportunity.
I don't think it says that in there. I think there says there's opportunities for them to perform. I have to find it now. Yeah, it's, the first day, they're going to go on a trip of Manhattan, and then it says opportunity for the choir, opportunity for the band, then they're going to Times Square. The next day, they're going to go to Midtown Manhattan, and there's an opportunity for choir. It does say band, partisan chaperones will attend the final concert at Carnegie Hall, I assume they weren't playing the final concert at Carnegie Hall, maybe I'm wrong. And then, they're going to visit Rockefeller Center, and then they're going to a Broadway show. And the fourth day, they're going to a tour of Upper Manhattan, choir opportunity, a band opportunity, another Broadway show.
So the typical, for the music trips, the typical experience is, one, perhaps, two, performance or listening experiences throughout the day, and then also one opportunity for sightseeing. So the Broadway musical is an opportunity for them to listen to the orchestra in the pit, and also the actors and actresses.
Were there any other questions?
Can we get a resolution then? Does anyone want to read that?
Yeah, be resolved, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the following educational tours. Model UN trip to Carnage College, Model UN Conference, Kenosha, Wisconsin, November 3, 2017. Ski club trips to Wilmot Mountain Ski Resort, Wilmot, Wisconsin, December 22, 2017. Chestnut Mountain Ski Resort, Galena, Illinois, January 15, 2018, and Cascade Ski Resort, Cascade, Wisconsin, February 18, 2018. ILHS Theater Festival at Illinois State University, Normal, Illinois, on January 11 through the 13, 2018. Model United Nations at the University of Chicago, February 1 through the 4, 2018. Spring break music department tour to New York City, New York, March 23 through the 27, 2018. Girls' water polo trip to Fort Lauderdale, Florida, March 24 to the 31, 2018, as presented in the September 12, 2017 Board Agenda Packet.
Any additional questions? All right, go for the vote.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Seera?
Yes.
Mr. Gretchen?
Yes.
All right, we're going to go matters for closed session. We have personnel, we have, we have student discipline, individual student matters.
No, I don't think we have any student discipline matters, Kristen, correct?
Sale or lease of property?
Yes.
Pending or intermittent litigation?
Yes.
Collective negotiations?
Yes.
And school safety?
Yes.
All right, this is a chance for visitors, second opportunity for visitors to make any comments or statements, do you have any visitors out there who'd like to make statements or comments?
I'm kind of reluctant.
All right. I have.
Sorry, I'll make the pass.
I'll have to read the disclaimer here. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages participation of its citizens in the business of school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor's statements are scheduled, citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note the boardification will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during the visitor's comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such requests would be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent. In addition, the Board of Education is interested in receiving suggestions and concerns from members of the community. Any individual may make a suggestion or request concern at the district or school office. All suggestions and/or concerns will refer to the appropriate level staff member or district administrator who is most able to respond in time and manner. Each concern or suggestion shall be considered on its merit. Any individual who is not satisfied after following the channels of authority may file grievance under Board Policy 2:260 Uniform Grievance Procedure. Neither this policy nor the Uniform Grievance Procedure creates an independent right to a hearing before the board. For more details, please refer to Board Policy 2:230 Public Participation at Board Education Meetings and a petition to the board, and Board Policy 8:110 Public Suggestions and Concerns. Please come up.
Thank you.
I'll be tempted to want me to read that.
I didn't intend to say anything, but I do want to say something. A few years ago, you guys got.
I need to state your.
Martha Carlson, Brookfield. Okay. A few years ago, you guys got $8.9 million from a grant that was put in a decade prior to that. I have no, because I am not following all the financial movement in the district, I don't know if all that money has been spent or what, but I do know it's been a huge expense over here, and with the litigation, at the field, the track, the parking lot, the tennis courts. And now you have approved a deficit budget, and you're talking about 5 million, 5 million, I believe, dollars to sell in bonds, 3 million going, it sounds like, to something that I would consider should come after education. A baseball field, a softball field, a training field, this is not an athletic facility, it is a school, it is an educational site. And when your board member, Dr. King, said at the beginning that he would need to look into reducing course offerings, and at the same time saying it would be irresponsible to use $3 million for anything other than pension or the preferred use, a baseball, softball field, and training facility. I mean, I really wish you guys would, you know, think about how that sounds to people who have students here. You have a student, you have students, I have students, you may still have students, I'm not sure, you don't, but I remember when my oldest daughter was here, and your son, I believe they were sophomores, and you guys wanted to raise the ACT scores to 100% college-ready. Well, it's now at 60%. It's gone down during your tenure. Class sizes have gone up, you're talking about spending money always on sports. It's really hard to listen to this, year after year, and I just, I want you to really think about it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
One discussion.
One discussion.
I think what Laura wanted to address was that the public use of the track, she was at her, at her son, her grandson's youth football game that was using the field, and there were community members who tried to ride their bikes on the track, and bring their bikes on the track, and so, I think Laura just wanted to say that there's signage posted on what, what rules there are for public use of the track, and she just wanted to make sure people understand it's our, it's the community's facility to protect and uphold as well, so please abide by the rules.
Dr. Skankis, can I ask you regarding the track two, in terms of the hours before school starts, is the track supposed to be open?
The sign says, like sunrise to dusk, and so I think our maintenance gets here at 6, 6:30, and so as the sunrise will be coming later now, it is set to open at sunrise, so.
So, community members can come before school starts to use the facility?
Yes. And we are paying someone to come in on the weekends and open the facility in the morning, too.
Thank you.
All right, can we get a resolution to go into closed session?
Resol, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second.
Before we have the vote, I've got the orders mixed up here, we, I want to raise any items, consideration for items of future meetings, is there anyone?
We do that at the end, anyway.
Well, we had a community member ask if we could do it before we go into close.
That's right.
Because it's not on tape.
So, if we can, is there any?
I think Dr. Skankis is going to review the Senate bill, or the bill that was passed in terms of unfunded mandates, possible options, I know you discussed that in the paper, but just wanted maybe you could touch on that more.
So you want that as a future agenda?
Future agenda, yes.
I won't be able to discuss it until I get the specifics from the, from the state.
Okay.
So that might take a month or two, until we get everything down.
Anyone on the side? All right, now can we take up the resolution? We already read it, and we already seconded, so we can, any additional issues on it? Okay, take the vote.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Ms. Reska? Dr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Seera?
Yes.